One minute to air. We are streaming.
Recording in progress.
No sé por qué me desconectaron a mí.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order of the City Council meeting here in City Hall chambers on Monday, May 15. We have a packed house tonight. It's full in chambers. There's folks standing on the walls, on my left, and we have a great crowd outside. And so we are happy that you all have chosen to join with us in person, and we also welcome those of you who have joined us via the internet. Please let us have a moment of silent meditation as we center ourselves for the people's business. Thank you all so much. I will now turn my attention to Councilwoman Deidra Anna Freeman, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is our practice to stand, salute the flag, and say the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Madam Clerk, if you will call the robe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor O'Neill.
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Holsey Hyman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now turn to our ceremonial items. We have two proclamations for this evening. The first is the Period Poverty Awareness Week proclamation, which will be read by Councilwoman Holsey Hyman and the National Public Works Week proclamation, which will be read by Councilman, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, in that order.
Good evening, everyone. To my colleagues, to the mayor, to my colleagues, Mayor Pro Tem, to our residents. How's everybody doing tonight? Okay. I'm going to take this point of privilege. I'm still on cloud nine. You see my Carolina blue. My baby graduated yesterday. I'm still on cloud nine. My mom, who's 89, who raised four of us from the South Bronx of New York in public housing, public assistance, was able to see her last baby graduate. I'm sorry for taking this, but I'm still on cloud nine. Thank you. Okay, proclamation. Whereas period supplies are necessary products for millions of people across the country, and whereas national surveys and research studies report that one or four menstruating individuals struggle to secure period supplies to meet their monthly needs due to a lack of income, and whereas this lack of period supplies, known as period poverty, can adversely affect the health and well-being of menstruators, and whereas the lack of period supplies... Whereas the lack of period supplies, known as period poverty, can adversely affect the health and well-being of menstruators, and whereas period poverty heightens the vicious cycle of poverty by forcing one in five menstruators to withdraw from daily life, losing pay or missing educational opportunities. And whereas the people of Durham recognize that period poverty is a public health issue, and addressing period poverty can lead to economic opportunities for Durham's people and surrounding communities to improve the health of women and girls, thus ensuring that all people have access to basic necessities and needs required to thrive to their full potential. Now therefore, I, Elaine M. O'Neill, the mayor of the city of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of May 22 through May 28, 2023, as Period Poverty Awareness Week. In Durham, and hereby urge all residents of Durham to donate generously to organizations that distribute period products to those struggling with period poverty, so that all Durham people can thrive and reach their potential, full potential. Witnessed by my hand and a corporate seal of the city of Durham, the 15th day of May, 2023. Mayor M. O'Neill. I just want to also say, as a professor for the last almost 20 years, when I was at Shaw University, there were a lot of students who did not have just basic needs, you know, sanitary napkins, deodorant, lotion, and we take those things for granted. And I remember as being one of the advisors for one of the student governments, we used to get those things donated. So please, just because students are in college or just because, that doesn't mean that they have everything they need. So again, please just kind of volunteer and donate. Thank you. Sorry for saying that, but I lived it.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill and City Council, for recognizing the one in five students, women, and menstruating individuals that miss work or school every day because they cannot afford the items that they need. The Diaper Bank of North Carolina provides period products through all of Durham public schools, as well as homeless shelters and other organizations working with families living in poverty. And we distribute over a million period products a year in this community and serve over 272 schools across the state. We believe that period supplies are school supplies, and no one should have to miss school because they cannot afford the items that they need. And so we are working really hard throughout our community in Durham and around the state to make sure that no one has to choose between living their life, going to work, going to school just because they're having their period. We do a lot of awareness events around this. We're having a menstruation celebration this month with uterus-shaped cakes and Bloody Marys. We encourage all to attend because this is a very serious issue that many individuals, including military families in our state, that we serve every single month, teachers that cannot afford these items, and students. And so we invite you to come and volunteer and help us address this issue in Durham.
I just also want to say that myself and Councilwoman Freeman and Julian Johnson, we volunteered at the diaper bank. And it was very, very, it was just so much fun. We didn't have any wine, though. But we'll come back for the next time. But it was very, it was a lot of fun. We were with the governor, and we're going to come back and do that again. I promised you that I was going to get some of my interns in there because they got to do community service. So I got you, okay? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, to my honorable colleagues, to our friends and neighbors in chamber. I want to thank her honor for the singular honor of reading this proclamation for National Public Works Week. And we are joined by Mr. Donald Perry, Senior Stormwater Infrastructure Construction Engineering Manager. Wow. Quite a title. Proclamation. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Durham. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, stormwater, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Durham to gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, be it now. And whereas 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Elaine M. O'Neill, mayor of the city of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May 21 through the 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week in Durham. And hereby urge all residents to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and the government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Witness my hand and a corporate seal of the city of Durham, North Carolina, this the 15th day of May, 2023. Elaine M. O'Neill, Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, and Madam Manager, for recognizing the Department of Public Works and the great work we do. For we are the department that keeps a city's infrastructure safe and in good working order. Although a lot of our work happens outside of the public eye, there is not a single day that goes by that our work does not impact the quality of life of every resident in our city. With us tonight are several staff members, and I would like to ask them to stand. And if we could recognize them for all the work they do all year, that would be great. Also, there are a couple of events we are having next week to celebrate National Public Works Week. Where we'll host our Public Works Week rodeo and other activities on Thursday, May 25, from 12:30 to 3:00 p.m. at the P-Walk. They include, activities include the Equipment Rodeo, where employees can compete against one another to see who has the softest touch and best accuracy. Also, an obstacle course. It's a timed course made up of a series of games and challenges that anyone can play. And my favorite, the Equipment Trial. Non-equipment operators get to try their hand to operate in a small excavator. We're also having a picnic lunch next Friday, May 26, at Southern Boundaries Park, which is adjacent to P-Walk, from 11:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. And we would like for you to come if your schedule allows. Again, thank you for recognizing our department.
Thank you all so much. We will now turn to our next order of business. It will be the announcements by council. So I will look to my right first to see if there are any announcements. Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did want to also thank the Diaper Bank of North Carolina just acknowledging they always offer that opportunity to volunteer and wrap those diapers. It's been beneficial to me over the years in doing my part. I did want to just take a moment and also just share that we just left the Remembrance Day, just acknowledging our youth are facing a lot more gun violence in schools than is bearable. I do want to say that I want to thank Jevanya Lewis, school board member, for organizing the event and all of our school board members, county commissioners, and my colleagues here on the council for supporting with a resolution, just making sure that we're all aware and acknowledging that this type of trauma our children are facing is not acceptable, and it should not be a norm. And so we've got to do better. And that doesn't mean, yes, the leaders in our community. It means everyone. And so just making sure you're all dialed in and paying attention to our youth, our children, from pre-K all the way through, just acknowledging that they're really struggling and they're calling for us to help. They shared a lot about their mental health challenges and trying to get past or trying to normalize after a gun violence situation on campus, you know, being in lockdown. And I think that that's hard to hear as a mother. This Mother's Day, it was marked differently, you know, with the ringing of the bells for the gun violence victims in Buffalo. And I don't want to see anything like that. And so we've got to make sure that we're listening and we're attending to our youth. And that's not by race, and it's not by gender. It is all of our youth. And that's my announcement. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Councilwoman Caballero.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see such a packed house. I just wanted to say thank you to my colleagues for granting me the opportunity to be able to travel. My mother lives in Tucson, Arizona, which is where my sister lives, and she is unfortunately the survivor of two rounds of COVID and is a long COVID survivor and has pretty complex medical issues now. It is not easy to be across the country from her. It is, I, yesterday being Mother's Day, have a lot of empathy for folks who have lost their mothers and for the sandwich generation who is raising children and dealing with aging parents. It's a hard place to be in. So thinking about all those in our community who do a lot to care for others in our community, including seniors and children. I also just want to thank Board Chair, excuse me, Board Member Lewis, Jevanya Lewis, for organizing the event today. It was very impactful. And finally, I want to extend a major shout out to Governor Cooper. I attended the veto rally on Saturday. His leadership is critically important right now on an issue that I find extremely important, which is around healthcare for all folks in the state and for bodily autonomy. And so I just want to thank him for standing up to members of the General Assembly who are trying to claw back rights for women. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening again. And thank you, Councilmember Caballero. Welcome home. And we certainly are keeping your mom in our prayers. I want to thank Councilmember Freeman as well for, I think, actually providing an on-ramp for my announcement and framing so wonderfully how we need to stay dialed in on this issue of violence. This is the 50th anniversary of hip-hop, and our nation is recognizing this culture, this international cultural phenomenon. And no matter what you may think of hip-hop, there's a significant strain, a subgroup of hip-hop artists who have used their platform and their voices to promote positivity, anti-violence, self-awareness. One of those artists will be with us at our Bembe Festival, KRS-One, who I sent the demo years ago, and I'm yet to hear from him about it. We'll talk when he gets here. But he will be one of the artists here. And of course, Durham has a significant footprint in hip-hop as well, from Little Brother to Ninth Wonder to our own Brian Dawson. So after consultation with the mayor and community members, I'm going to be bringing forth a resolution to recognize and celebrate the 50th anniversary of hip-hop with particular emphasis on Durham's footprint in the industry and on the art form. And also, with the mayor's permission as well, be preparing a proclamation to be read at the Bembe Festival. Y'all need to be at Bembe this year. It's going to be, it's going to be ridiculous. To be read at the Bembe Festival honoring this international cultural phenomenon and particularly, particularly those who have participated in this art form who have stressed anti-violence messages, stressed uplift messages, and stressed positive messages. So just alerting my colleagues that I will be bringing forth that resolution. I hope it will pass and look forward to celebrating this cultural phenomenon. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, colleagues.
Looking to my left, Councilwoman Holsey Hyman.
Again, good, good evening. I'm going to just say this again. We were able to get my mom on the plane, who's 89. You don't know how my heart is so filled. But she told me, I wanted her to stay, but we had to get her back because she's got a lot of medicine and stuff. But she told me to tell you hello from the boogie down Bronx, okay? Bull City, but from the boogie down Bronx. So a blessing again to have her be here. I also wanted to just say that this month is Mental Health Awareness Month. And it is a time to raise the awareness of mental health and behavioral health issues, to advocate for prevention and preventive services, and to provide resources to assist those in need to help reduce the misconceptions and the stigma around mental health conditions that people face. And actually, also being with my colleagues at the Bull to celebrate this event today around gun violence, the youth talked about highlighting positive things that they're doing. You know, the media, and I'm not going to get in trouble saying this, but guess what? I'm going to get in trouble all the time. The media also sometimes highlights things about the gun violence. But let's highlight these kids who are graduating with 4Os or better. Let's highlight the kids that are working and going to school and then taking care of their families at home. Let's highlight the kids that are living in public housing, like myself, who grew up in public housing but just needed somebody to say, "Moni, you can do it," which allowed me to go to Binghamton University at the age of 16 and then to go to Columbia, which I never thought that I would do. So again, I'm really big on mentoring. I'm really big on giving back. But we all need to do that, and we need to really highlight what the youth are doing. Thank you.
Any further announcements from my left? Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, colleagues. Good evening to the Bull City. It's great to be with you all tonight. I too attended the event today, the day of remembrance, at the Bull. And I hope that you also took time at 10:00 a.m. this morning for the moment of silence citywide to reflect on what we have here. I did want to bring a little more context in it. And speaking from the perspective of a black man, I believe over 60% of our homeless population are black and upwards of 80 to 90% are black men. Those numbers are rough, but it's around there somewhere. And they got there somehow. Multiple reasons, of course. But one thing I know for sure is the criminal justice is a huge contributor, criminal justice system. And they got there somehow. And I hope that we can all come together to stop that cycle. Speaking from personal experience, my brother is a constant product of recycling within the criminal justice system. And it is so tough to deal with. So it was great to be there today. But there was a young lady, I cannot remember her name, Vice President of the Drama Department at Hillside. She gave some analogies where she said, "If there's a house on fire and there's a fireman close by, they're more than likely going to get out of their car or out of their truck. They're going to go and try to put that fire out because that's what they do." If there's someone that's about to get robbed and there's a police officer somewhere nearby, more than likely, they're going to get out and they're going to try and save that person that's on the brink of getting robbed. And she talked about not, you know, not, you know, being a accessory basically to crime. If you see something bad and you can do something about it but choose not to, then you're a accessory. So with those first responders being expected, why is it that we see all of these things happening in our community? We don't say anything. Her point was, "Don't be a accessory." Those were my marching orders. And I hope they'll be yours, too. So I really appreciate her. And just briefly, I want to congratulate, first of all, Happy Mother's Day belated to everyone. Also, wanted to shout out NCCU and Duke with the graduations, but also the softball teams. They won their championships. So let's give it up for NCCU and Duke. And one last thing. You know, Sam Jones, NCCU graduate, held the record, 47 points in a playoff. From Durham. Played in Durham. Jason Tatum, who played in Durham, just beat his record in Game Seven. So shout out to the Bull City Durhamites that are doing this. And shout out to Swing Pals. Visited them this week. Also, speaking of positive, Swing Pals saving lives, Kickside Kicks Academy, Project 300. There are so many things happening in this city, guys. We can invest in what works. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Any further announcements? All right, my turn. First of all, it is my distinct honor to introduce to you all via a picture today our deputy mayor for the remainder of this month. We hope that he can be shown. That is Mr. Sloan Meek, who I met today. And I was so impressed with that young man. He came by City Hall today to talk to me about his neighborhood. And he is a part of the resident council at North Street Neighborhood. And he came by to talk to me today about installing a safe and accessible crosswalk system around his neighborhood and in downtown Durham. So there is our deputy mayor for the city of Durham for the rest of this month. Sloan, I told you I was going to do this, and there you are. So everybody, please give him a round of applause. I also just wanted to highlight a couple of events that I attended over the last couple of weeks. I told Sloan that I would be presiding for him tonight, but he's welcome to come and take this job anytime. So I went to the Museum of Life and Science, what I had not visited in a long time, and spent about two and a half, three hours out there walking those grounds. And I would encourage each and every one of you all who have not visited our museum. It is not the children's museum anymore. It is a space in Durham, North Carolina that is, to behold, right in the center of our city. And so I would encourage you all to go to our museum. I went to the Butterfly House. It was wonderful. The quarry is now a lake with a floating dock on it. It is a beautiful space. So please, over the summer months as it gets warm, go and take a walk around the Museum of Life and Science. I also got an opportunity along with Councilwoman Deidra Anna Freeman and Councilwoman Javier Caballero. We took a tour on some of the things that the Durham Open Space Trails are doing. It was a wonderful two-hour bus, two- or three-hour bus tour around some of the things that are happening with our open trails and spaces. And believe me, if you haven't been out walking in a long time, there are lots of great spaces that have already been completed thanks to the city, some of our city officials and our city staff. And there are going to be more spaces that will be coming forward in the last, in the next year or so. So stay tuned. And if there are any other folk from the tour, if you just stand, I'd just like to recognize them if they're here from our Durham Open Space Commission. Not here, but they are on point and they're making sure that you have a safe place to walk if you so desire in the city of Durham. I also went to our fleet management with Director Joe Clark on last week and spent two hours, about two hours with them. And I'll tell you, do you know that we have folk who are able to make sure that our fire trucks are still safe? We have a lot of firefighters. Do you know that we have a full mechanical shop out there and a warehouse? Forty-eight people strong that keep our fleet in the city rolling, and we don't even think about it. I saw it for myself. It is an impressive operation there. I am touring a lot of our city facilities because I realize that a lot of our city workers, you never know. And they are working almost 24 hours a day. Just a fun fact about them, they run two shifts. But when it snows, they go 24 hours. They go 24 hours a day. So when I tell you that we have great city workers who are doing great things behind the scenes and the things that we're taking for granted, they don't. They're out there making sure it happens. So a shout out to Mr. Joe Clark and all of the 48 employees of our Fleet Management Department. So thank you all for that. And I think that's it for me, everybody. So now we will move on to our first order of business, which would be to recognize our city manager for any priority items that she may have.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, and members of the Durham City Council. I do have two priority items for you this evening. Agenda item number 24, fiscal year 2324, proposed budget and fiscal year 202429 Capital Improvement Plan. The presentation will be made during the May 15, 2023 City Council meeting. And agenda item number 28, Consolidated Annexation Carpenter Preserve Attachment F, the cost-benefit analysis was modified to reflect an increase of units from 235 to 260 and to analyze the impact of the additional units. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Page. I now turn to City Attorney Ray Burke for any priority items she may have.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neil, Mayor Protem Middleton, and members of the council. It's good to see you all. The City Attorney's Office has no priority items.
Thank you, ma'am. Now to our City Clerk for any priority items she may have.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, and City Council members. The City Clerk's Office has no priority items this evening.
Thank you all. We will now move to our next order of business, which is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda consists of items that the council has previously considered in a work session. All items on the Consent Agenda may be approved by a single vote of the council. Items may be removed from the Consent Agenda by a council member or a member of the public. And those items will be considered separately at the end of the meeting tonight. I am going to read the Consent Agenda and the entire Agenda, starting with item number one, the Carolina Theater of Durham Board of Trustees Appointment. Number two, the Durham Culture Advisory Board Appointment. Item three, the Durham Workers Rights Commission Appointment. Item five, the City County Planning Department FY24 Work Program. Item six, is the approval of a multifamily housing facility to be known as Commerce Street Apartments in the City of Durham, North Carolina, and the financing thereof with multifamily housing revenue bonds. Item seven, contract with Dixie Lawn Service, Inc. for Interstate 85 medium maintenance services. Item eight, the First Amendment to Agreement to Fund American Dance Festival 2023 Season operated by American Dance Festival, Inc. using City of Durham grant funds. Item nine, service contract with Wednesday Landscape Services Company for Rights Away Maintenance South. Number 10, the contract with Morris and McDaniel, Inc. for promotional testing and assessment services. 11, Contract SW-91 Public Works Street Maintenance Repairs 2023. Item 12, Contract SW-91C Inspections for PW Street Maintenance Repairs. Number 13, is the resolution to support the Upper Neuse River Basin Association UNRBA FY2024 Budget. A presentation was made at the May 4, 2023 City Council Work Session. Item 14, Contract Amendment Number Two for ST-317C Utility Locate Services. 15, Contract BR-2010C Bridge Professional Services. Number 16, Contract with Nixface Solutions LLC for Unbased Maintenance and Support. 17, Assignment of Contract for the Management and Operation of the Gold Durham Access Service. 18, The Service Contract with RATPDEVUSA, Inc. for the Management, Operation, and Maintenance of the Gold Durham Fixed Route Transit System. 19, Intergovernmental Agreement with the Triangle J Council of Governments for the Transition of Durham Chapel Hill Carboro Metropolitan Planning Organization Lead Planning Agency Responsibilities. Number 20, Award of Construction Contract to Mofat Pipe, Inc. for the Hoover Road Transmission Main Replacement Project. 21, Award of Construction Contract to Carolina Civil Works, Inc. for the Parkwood Area Lift Station Consolidation Project. 22, The Proposed Water and Sewer Rates for FY20232024. Presentation was made at the May 4, 2023 City Council Work Session. Item 23, The Update to Contract 18648 with EMA Resources, Inc. for Handling and Disposal of Water and Wastewater Treatment Plant Residuals and Biosolids. We now turn to our General Business Agenda. Item four, the Approval of City Council Minutes. Item 24, Fiscal Year 202324, Proposed Budget and Fiscal Year 202429 Capital Improvement Plan CIP. I will turn now to our General Business Agenda, Public Hearings. Item 27, the Consolidated Annexation Harlow Point. 28, the Consolidated Annexation Carpenter Preserve. 29, the Consolidated Annexation 751 South. Item 30, the Consolidated Annexation 901 and 903 Sharon Road. 31, FY2024 Stone Water Rates. A presentation was made at the May 4, 2023 City Council Work Session. And that would conclude the reading of our agenda. We have no poor items, and I'm now prepared to entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
It's been moved?
It's been moved by Councilwoman Caballero and seconded by Councilwoman Freeman, I'm sorry, and seconded by Councilwoman Johnson. Madam Clerk, if you will please open the vote.
Madam Mayor, we're having a technical difficulty. If we could raise hands?
All right, if everyone would please raise your left hand. All those that are agreeing, all those saying aye. The nays have the same right. Seeing none, that motion passes unanimously. And the Consent Agenda is approved. We will now move to our third order of business, which will be the General Business Agenda. And we will start with the Approval of City Council Meeting. And I believe this is from our previous meetings. And I believe it was Councilwoman Freeman who asked that that remained and be placed on our General Business Agenda. So I will turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that the item was pulled so that I could support the full agenda and address the minutes separately. Thank you, that's all.
All right, are there any other need to, any other comments from council colleagues on that matter? Okay, if not, I am prepared to entertain a motion to approve item number four, which is our City Council Meetings at this time.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem and seconded by Councilwoman Javier. If you would all raise your left hand for in agreement? All those opposed have the same right? We have a vote of 5-2. With Councilwoman Freeman and Councilwoman Hosea Hyman voting in the negative. We will now turn to item number 24, which is our Fiscal Year 202324, Proposed Budget and Fiscal Year 202429 Capital Improvement Plan CIP. And before our city manager gets started, we have a lot of people who are interested in this item tonight. Particularly, I believe, the men in blue, the men and women in blue. I did speak earlier today with a Ms. Meredith Carter. I believe she's here this evening. Hey, Ms. Carter? And ask her if she would allow us to have three spokesmen to speak tonight to the fireman issue. We will be having a public hearing on June the 5th, 4th? The 5th. We want to hear from every last person that wants to speak. However, you can see we have a packed crowd. So we will have the opportunity to hear from everybody on three different occasions on this particular matter. We will start that tonight. We have people who will be speaking on the fireman issue, and we also others who are here tonight to speak on other parts of the CIP. So you will have the opportunity to speak again on the next day. And you also have one other time that I want to tell you all about that you can come. On this Thursday for our work session, there is a citizen comment matter. And so I would invite you also to come then. We want to make sure that we hear from everybody that wants to speak. But because we have a packed docket and it's night, and we want to make sure that we give ample opportunity for us to give as much time as possible, I would ask that we allow those other folk who are here tonight to also be able to speak before 12 o'clock midnight. So we would ask that you please, please, please allow us to do this. And you will be given the opportunity to speak as long as three minutes allows at each of those occasions, okay? All right, so council, I'm sorry, I will now turn it over to our city manager for the first presentation on our CIP.
Good evening. As your city manager, I am honored this evening to present to you my proposed budget for fiscal year 20232024 for the City of Durham. Each year at this time, I pause to reflect on the past year, to assess the city's accomplishments, as well as consider all the work that remains to be done. To say that we've accomplished a lot in our effort to make this city an even greater place to live, work, and play would be an understatement. And we've done so while facing the winds of life. The winds at our back pushing us forward, and the winds we sometimes face, some professional and some personal, that come at a time that we least expect it. But our challenge is to face those winds head-on with courage, knowing that we are all on the same team. In fact, the challenge is, as the old Chinese proverb says, to use those winds to build windmills. And build windmills we did. Working together as city employees, working together with the leadership of our city council, and working together with you, our community, all of whom are our neighbors. Thanks to our heart team, the term "neighbors" now carries a broader meaning than someone who simply lives beside you. As with past budgets, I appreciate the guidance and support of our city's elected leaders, Mayor Elaine O'Neil, Mayor Protem Mark Anthony Middleton, and all of the City Council members. Each year, their steady guidance and direction is crucial to ensuring all our neighbors are included in Durham's prosperity. During this budget cycle, City Council and our staff spent time considering the work that remains to be done at two retreats we held in February. We also heard from many residents who raised their needs and priorities for this budget during our March public hearing. Throughout this presentation, you will see how I propose to maximize this budget to address those priorities, as well as improve life for every one of our neighbors. For clarification, according to our heart program developers, we are all neighbors. Whether we are coworkers, residents, business owners, whoever, all of us come together as one neighborhood to make up this great city that we all call home. Again, as in past years, I must take time to celebrate our more than 2,600 city employees, neighbors, who have been the wind at my back, pushing the city forward over the past years. I celebrate their dedication, their innovation, and their gutsy determination. For every one of them has been the driving force in maintaining our high standard of providing quality services for our city's residents. I want to make it very clear that I value our city employees for doing what it takes to get the job done in this environment. It's no secret that the city, like most municipalities and even some private sector employers, is experiencing a shortage of workers in several areas, especially our Public Safety and Operations Department areas. These areas are crucial to providing vital services, including keeping our city safe, to providing safe drinking water, to collecting our garbage. I can say without reservation that our employees have stepped up to ensure the services our residents expect didn't miss a beat. Long hours and being assigned other duties as needed have been necessary to fill in some of these gaps. I can assure you that my gratitude on behalf of the city is unending. And I will do my best to ensure that our employees continue to be rewarded appropriately through compensation and benefits. And, as importantly, their health and well-being continue to be top priorities of my administration. I don't have to tell you that our many vacancies will not be filled overnight. But we're making every effort to attract new workers, as well as keep our experienced and dedicated public servants. Throughout this presentation, you will see how the true meaning of "neighbor" permeated our thinking as we developed this budget. A budget that addresses the vital needs of our communities, from greatly enhancing our efforts to outreach to our neighbors in crisis, to ensuring that the top concerns of the community, affordable housing, street maintenance and repairs, recreation areas, and green spaces are prioritized. We will continue to make every effort to right the wrongs of the past by prioritizing investment and engagement in disinvested neighborhoods, which have been typically communities of color. This budget also supports other important efforts, providing Durham's youth paid career exploration opportunities and positive recreation and social experiences and activities, as well as creating equitable opportunities for shared prosperity for our businesses and our residents. Let's look at the fiscal year 2324, budget by the numbers. The total proposed budget is $610 million, compared to $570.4 million last year, which is an increase of $39.6 million. It includes the city's general fund and the other funds highlighted here. You will hear more about these funds as the presentation progresses. The proposed property tax rate remains the same at $0.5577 per 100 of assessed value. This is the same rate as last year. Real property growth, real property growth of 3.62%, which generated an additional $9.4 million, played a large part in our ability to hold the tax rate at the current level. This tax rate means that the owner of a house valued at $244,539, which is the median house value according to the Durham County Office of Tax Administration, will receive a city tax bill of about $1,364 next year, or the equivalent of about $114 per month. The proposed general fund budget, which funds core city services, is $281.5 million. And that represents a $25.3 million increase compared to last year's budget. The general fund supports many of the services that the city provides, such as fire and police services, emergency communications, and parks and recreation. It also supports employee compensation, street paving, and capital improvement plan projects, to which much of the increase can be attributed. Let's talk about the city's primary sources of revenue, which are property and sales taxes. You can see that real property value has grown in Durham. Last year, while the pandemic continued to fuel a lot of uncertainty about the economy, Durham continued to weather the storm by exceeding revenue projections. Sales tax revenue is projected to increase a little more than 15% compared to the previous year's budget. Based upon the previous year's sales tax collections, we are budgeting $99.9 million for sales tax. Other sources of revenue are projected to increase as well, such as our occupancy tax and our state shared revenues. While Durham has consistently outperformed national and state financial indicators over the past few years, we don't bank on that trend and will always prioritize being good stewards of our taxpayer resources. We continue to recognize that while many are enjoying the fruits of the law... We continue to recognize that while many are enjoying the fruits of the local economy, we must maintain a laser focus on our neighbors who continue to struggle to find housing they can afford, jobs at family-sustaining wages, and youth who need guidance and opportunity. To cover increasing operational costs, improve aging water lines, and support other capital needs, we're proposing modest increases to our water, sewer, and stormwater rates. These rate changes were discussed at city council last work session and are on tonight's agenda for consideration. These new rates include an average monthly increase of $2.20 for water and sewer customers and a $1.55 monthly fee increase for stormwater, all of which will be effective July 1st. Also, you'll see here, our parking rates will remain the same. Proposed general fund expenditures include increases for personnel costs, including new positions, market and merit pay increases for our employees, and the cost of providing excellent and competitive employee benefits. Operating expenditures are projected to increase by $1.2 million. Due to consistent effective management of the city's resources and the city council's policy on the use of fund balance, or our savings account, we have access to a strong fund balance. I am proposing appropriating $13.8 million from the fund balance for the one-time costs listed here. In addition to allocating $4 million for street maintenance and $5.4 million for departmental projects, I'd like to note that I am proposing transferring $3.3 million for one-time capital improvement projects and $500,000 to acquire and expand open space and trails. You see here that $608,000 is also included for the election costs later this year. This is a good time to share a couple of pieces of great news about Durham. One, your city government continues to enjoy a AAA bond rating from all three rating agencies: Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch. What this means is that we can borrow money or issue bonds for major projects at lower interest rates, thus saving our taxpayers' dollars. And two, almost a year ago, the finance website Wallet Hub ranked Durham as the 10th-best-run city in the nation. Actually, it was the number-one-ranked city in North Carolina. Now, that is a slight drop from 2021, when we ranked number seven, but we'll still take it. You should know, too, our ranking is not a fluke, as Durham has earned top-10 spots each year since 2018. Our complete budget document covers every detail of our revenue and spending for the coming fiscal year. This includes our core municipal services, such as solid waste, our roads, our water, our parks, and public safety, as well as other projects and initiatives that further our strategic goals. We have used our strategic plan, which was developed with input from our employees, our residents, elected officials, and other key stakeholders to guide our budget priorities. In tonight's presentation, I will focus on several priority areas for our organization and our community. Here are our top priorities that will be featured in this year's budget. For comparison, they are the same as last year's priorities. They are our public safety, our employee compensation, shared prosperity, and our capital improvement plan. Because we can't cover every single aspect of the budget tonight, I encourage you to review the complete proposed budget that is now available on our website at durhamnc.gov/budget. Our community safety department was created in 2021 to pilot-test ways to appropriately respond to residents or neighbors experiencing behavioral crisis rather than sending law enforcement. I am happy to say that the pilot is complete. In April, we celebrated the success of the HART program, which stands for Holistic Empathetic Assistance Response Teams, with the premiere of a documentary explaining how the program works. More than 600 people attended the premiere and left with a better understanding and appreciation of the program. I must point out that the success of HART, led by our community safety department, is due to the strong partnership, collaboration, and support of our police, 911, and fire departments for the overall benefit of all of our neighbors. That is why I am happy to announce the expansion of this program to now serve the entire city instead of just... Instead of just the pilot areas, which represented roughly one-third of the city. Second, all HART crisis response programs will operate seven days a week, 12 hours per day. Currently, only our unarmed response teams operate on that schedule. These two changes mean that the HART team, which has become a national model in this field, will be able to handle three times as many calls as they do now. And even more importantly, this expansion in the staff and the service area will ensure that many more neighbors receive the right services in their moment of crisis and are connected to the care that they want and need. I should also add that this expansion will free up other public safety responders, including our police, to respond to other priority calls throughout the city. We are also increasing our support for the Project Build and Bull City United programs, as well as continuing our funding support for the Durham Expunction and Restoration Program. As Durham continues to grow, we must be prepared to meet the public safety needs, including our fire protection. Development in the northern part of Durham comes with additional service needs. I have included funding for 16 new firefighters, one new fire inspector, and a new north-side ladder truck to serve this area. A new ladder truck for the east side of our city is also funded in this budget. And in the Durham Police Department, we're continuing the funding for the ShotSpotter Program to locate and address gunfire in the city. For more details and data collected about this program thus far, I encourage you to visit the ShotSpotter dashboard on our police department's webpage. As I said earlier, it is impossible to carry out our work without our dedicated employees doing their work, whether it's putting out fires, monitoring our drinking water, or coming to the aid of our neighbors when they need us most. Artificial intelligence, some call it AI, hasn't come that far yet. We absolutely must reward them appropriately by providing competitive salaries along with great benefits. You see on this slide that city employees will be eligible for 6% to 8% increases in their salaries this year, along with an appreciation bonus of $300 at the end of the year. Sworn employees who received market pay increases of 14% to 15% last year will receive an additional 2% pay structure increase and a 5% step increase, a total of 7%, with the $300 year-end bonus as well. I've also included for a class and compensation study to ensure that our salaries are and continue to be competitive with the market, and to ensure that existing jobs are classified consistently. The Durham minimum livable wage will also be... will also increase from $17.60 per hour to $18.46 per hour effective July 1st. To meet the growing needs of our organization and community, this proposed budget includes the addition of 61 new full-time positions in several areas that you see here on the slide. At this... and this year, because the city has many positions which have remained unfilled for a while, some for a year or more, I have decided to repurpose a few of these positions and add them to departments where they are needed most. These 24 positions will come from the various departments you see listed here. Repurposing rather than creating all new positions has many advantages, including helping to manage the total position growth across the organization. Creating and promoting strategies and programs to ensure that all our residents share in Durham's prosperity continues to be a top priority. We're continuing to make progress in our efforts to provide affordable housing. My proposed budget of $14.3 million is a little more than a 2% increase over last year's budget. Funded with a tax rate appropriation of 3.38 cents from the overall property tax, $0.2 totaling $8.1 million is included for planned affordable housing projects and services, and $1.38, generating $6.2 million, will be used to pay the debt service for the $95 million Affordable Housing Bond. All the dedicated housing fund is applied to Forever Home Durham. Forever Home Durham is our $160 million program, creating affordable opportunities for renters and homeowners and stabilizing our neighborhoods. Through new construction, property repairs, and essential housing services, we're building a more inclusive and livable community. Over the next several years, the $95 million Affordable Housing Bond, combined with local and federal funding, will be used to invest a total of $160 million to reach affordable housing goals established for the program. On the next three slides, you will see some of the progress that has been made to date, along with upcoming milestones for various Durham Housing Authority and City of Durham housing projects. Three projects funded have been completed, adding 339 units. Four other projects with 88 units have either started or are in continuing construction. And finally, we have either awarded or committed $42.5 million to create or preserve 1,036 housing units. Last year, we celebrated a significant boost to our housing goals. The City of Durham and the Durham Housing Authority received a $40 million Choice Neighborhood Initiative grant. The award, the result of a great collaboration between the City of Durham and Durham Housing Authority, will go toward developing 519 East Main Street and Liberty Street public housing properties and revitalizing the surrounding neighborhoods. The city council has also dedicated $10 million of the American Rescue Plan Act funding for affordable housing goals. While we know achieving our housing goals will take some time, we are making significant strides toward ensuring that we can provide housing for our many neighbors who might feel left out of Durham's prosperity. Now let's touch on the city's transit goals. I am proud to say, with continued federal support of the... of American Rescue Act Plan funding, along with the resumption of state funding, we'll be able to continue fair-free service on Go Durham. As you saw earlier, $0.37 of the property tax is budgeted to pay for core transit services. We've been fortunate to be awarded federal transit grants, along with the federal funding, to improve our transit services, including our bus system. Go Durham! An additional transit planner is included to help manage our transit services. We also recognize that traffic fatalities across the state, especially as they involve pedestrians and bikes, have increased. Therefore, I have included funding for a Vision Zero Coordinator to lead the program to help develop strategies to reduce the number of fatalities occurring in Durham. I am proud of our Durham Youth Works Program. It is supported by local businesses, by Duke University and Health System, Durham County, and the city. The program continues to be a way to engage our young neighbors, to give them skills they'll need to enter the job market. I want to make sure that every youth who wants a summer job experience can have one in Durham. This year, approximately 700 young people, age 14 to 24, have applied for the program, and it is my mission to see that every single one of them can participate. The budget includes $600,000 to support this life-changing program. On this slide, you will also see support for other programs aimed at providing opportunities for neighbors who need vocational training or guidance. In addition to adopting the proposed budget, city council will also soon adopt our updated capital improvement plan, which guides our long-term capital projects such as infrastructure and facilities. While the proposed capital improvement plan update will be presented during the upcoming budget work sessions, some of the newly proposed capital projects are noted on the next three slides. The capital improvement budget includes a little over $306 million for new projects and to complete existing ones. The funding includes $84.7 million for important general government capital needs. These projects were prioritized using an equity lens or screening questions to determine who would benefit from the improvement and who may be burdened by it. The assessment also looks at unintended outcomes of the proposed projects. I am also proposing that we continue our capital commitments for our fleet replacement program and for our street maintenance and repaving programs. This slide shows funding dedicated to our enterprise capital projects, including our water and sewer, our stormwater, and our solid waste projects. Over the past year, we have been providing updates about our progress toward our commitment to green and equitable infrastructure. A half-cent tax continues in this budget for projects important to neighborhoods that have historically received fewer resources or investment. We are proud to say that this list was created with the ideas of the neighbors who live in these neighborhoods, their input, and they helped us prioritize these first projects. For the coming year, projects totaling $17 million will be funded. On this slide, you see a list of projects for enhanced and equitable green spaces. Also included in that number are other infrastructure projects to improve or build sidewalks, to improve pedestrian safety, and for stormwater. For years, enhancing the Fayette Street corridor has been on the radar of both the city and the many stakeholders who live and work there. We, the administration, and elected officials have heard your voices, and while not all-inclusive of planned corridor investments, we're including and highlighting $10 million to help rediscover, enhance, and create with the community a sense of place for this valued and historic area of our city. On this slide, you see that this funding will support a variety of efforts, including residential and commercial real estate programs, small business support, along with street, sidewalk, and landscape improvements. These investments will be dedicated and time-bound. Now that I've presented highlights from the proposed budget, it is time for our elected leadership and our community members to take a closer look. I must also add that this year's budget has been particularly challenging. As many of you know, on March 30th, we lost a longtime budget leader, Mr. John Allor. John was promoted to the Budget and Management Services Director just one year ago, and his sudden death was felt deeply by not just his staff, but our entire city government. I might also say that his loss was felt by many outside of Durham for his reach spanned the United States and Canada, his native country. This budget proposal is dedicated to John. We are grateful for having known this great, multi-talented person, whom many have called a true Renaissance man. a true Renaissance man. I'd especially like to thank interim director Christina Riordan. Christina stepped up at this critical and challenging time to lead the way as we develop this budget. Christina, I know it was not easy, but you and your staff excelled throughout this process. Going back to the wind analogy, there's a quote that goes like this. "She stood in the storm, and when the wind did not blow her away, she adjusted herself." My sincere thanks to you and your staff. City- City Council and staff will review the details of this proposed budget at next week's budget work sessions on May twenty-fourth and May twenty-fifth, beginning at nine a.m., each day in the committee room on the second floor of City Hall. Due to limited space, we invite the public, our neighbors, to watch the livestream on the city's YouTube channel. We also encourage the public to share your thoughts at our budget public hearing, which will take place during the June fifth City Council meeting, beginning at seven p.m. We remain committed to transparency in the budget, as well as in our total operations. Therefore, the complete proposed budget is now available for your review on the city's website at durhamnc.gov/budget. We continue to be a destination of choice for new residents. While we acknowledge our challenges as a community, Durham is still a dynamic city. In fact, you should know that the Durham metro area is ranked as one of the best places to live, number six, by U.S. News and World Report. This is based on how well a city meets their residents' expectations for where to live, based on affordability, based on quality of life, and desirability overall. The latest ranking should be released tomorrow, and I believe, I believe, our ranking will be even higher for this year. I am not surprised that so many consider Durham a best place to live. There are many reasons we all love living here. We know we're nowhere near perfect, but we do know that by working together, we can all love living here. You can learn more about our news, programs, services, and operations right in your news feed by following the city on our social media channels. I also encourage you to watch our news videos, Bull City Today, Bull City Rap, and our talk show, City Life, or listen to our podcasts to get information daily as to what's going on with your local government. You can also subscribe to our two newsletters, City Connect and Durham Digest, directly on our homepage at durhamnc.gov. Our communications department works hard to communicate what we're doing for this community, and I hope that you'll engage with us on any of these channels to stay current on what's happening with your local gov. Finally, thank you, Mayor and City Council, for your leadership on behalf of all of our neighbors of our great city of Durham, North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Page. As you all know, this is going to be the first of several opportunities that we will talk about our budget. I am going to turn it over to my colleagues at this time for any comments, and then we will go right to our speakers, some of whom will join us, who have joined us remotely, as well as those who are in chambers about this item. Colleagues, any comments? Councilwoman Caballero.
Just very briefly, thank you so much, Madam Manager. That was an excellent budget. I look forward to our sessions next week and to the next budget hearing, public hearing, I should say. This is an incredible budget, especially considering how much we're able to do and that there is no tax raise for residents this year.
Thank you, Councilwoman Caballero. Any other comments to my right? To my left, any comments? Councilwoman Williams, followed by Councilwoman Johnson.
Yep, briefly, you are a superwoman. I don't know how you do this. It's not like this council doesn't fill your hands up. You have your hands full with us. Thank you so much for making the impossible possible, and I hope that the community really dig into seeing how complicated this was, and she just made it look easy. So, thank you.
Yeah, ditto to that. Yeah, this is an incredible budget. I'm really excited to see all the new programs and staff positions, and to do that without a tax increase is really incredible. And I want to just especially appreciate the intention that's being paid to expanding the Heart Pilot. That's really important work for our community and, as our city manager said, has become a national model for this type of work. Durham is really, is really leading the way in figuring out how to do this really important, this really important work, and I just wanted to appreciate the robust expansion that the city manager is proposing, and look forward to continuing to discuss it in all of our other budget items in our work sessions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson and Councilwoman Williams. We now turn to persons who have signed up to speak. I first want to, I think Ms. Howard is here in person. Is that correct, Ms.? All right, thank you. I would first like to turn our attention to persons who have signed up from our firefighters, Ms. Carter. You're free to call those three names. I do have Mr. Darius Thompson and also Mr. Ricky Williams, but if you have three additional persons that would like to speak at this time to this item, they are welcome to come forward at this time. Those persons who are desiring to speak. I also would encourage all of you all to come back on Thursday, too, and when we get ready to vote. This is what democracy looks like. If you just state your name, and you have three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Meredith Carter. I'm a firefighter here in Durham. So, good evening to the council members, Madam Mayor, Madam Manager Page. So, sorry, I wasn't expecting to go today. If you remember me, I'm the firefighter that spoke at the January council meeting in 2022, right before our mid-year pay adjustment was approved. I spoke about how I had been stuck at the firefighter zero pay step for three years, and I asked the council to please place firefighters in the correct pay step. After I spoke, the council, the mayor, and representatives from H.R. promised that the pay scale adjustment was just the first step towards making our pay right. In the sixteen months since that meeting, I have not seen any action from the city management, H.R., or the council towards placing firefighters in the correct pay step. So I'm now a firefighter in my fifth year of service. I'm at the firefighter step one in our pay plan. This amounts to forty-five thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars per year, or fifteen dollars and forty-nine cents per hour. That's multiple dollars less than the livable wage. I'm at this pay step because our raises were frozen for multiple years during COVID. The city has a long history of compressing its firefighters through unfairly implemented pay plans. We have a captain who has been a captain for twenty-two years, and he is still at step nine. He should have been at step ten for eleven years by now. The top ends of our pay steps have become all but unattainable. What's worse, when we look around at our neighboring departments, we can see how far behind we truly are. A fifth-year firefighter in Greensboro makes seventeen point six percent more than I do here in Durham. So many firefighters that watched that council meeting felt heartened by the promises made to them by H.R., the mayor, and various council members, and the lack of action, we've seen that in our retention. So far this year, not including retirements, we've lost seventeen firefighters, including retirements at twenty-two. So we are on track to lose sixty-one firefighters this year alone. As a reminder, we are a fire department of just over four hundred employees, and these are not just warm bodies we're losing. We're losing our future leaders of this department. You might be wondering how much it costs a city when one of our highly-trained firefighters leaves. It costs about seventy thousand dollars in training, plus conservatively, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in hire-back, that is, hiring back an off-duty firefighter at their overtime rate to fill that position until a new firefighter can be recruited and trained. So that's a total cost of around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars per firefighter that walks out the door. We have created a detailed plan. The local six-six-eight firefighters' union has created a detailed plan that shows which step every single person in our department should be at. We estimate that cost of correcting this compression to be a little bit less than two point five million dollars in base salary. If this change prevents eleven firefighters from resigning, it will have paid for itself. Additionally, per the second quarter financial report presented on February twenty-third, we are under budget by six point two million dollars as far as personnel costs for the current fiscal year. My brothers and sisters and I, we love our jobs. We love being firefighters, and we love serving this community. We just ask that the city uphold its end of the deal and fairly compensate us for our years of service. We are asking each council member to please be our advocate and ask H.R. to come up with a plan to put the city's firefighters into the correct pay steps. Thank you very much for your time.
I would call forth Mr. Darius Thompson, and also Mr. Ricky Williams and Ms. Carter. If there are two others, they would be welcome to come. I just ask that they fill out a card so that we'll have the correct record. Mr. Thompson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I hate to do this under these circumstances, though. My name is Darius Thompson. I've been with the Durham Fire Department for ten years, and I'm a driver. I chose to work in Durham because I saw how the city was moving. It had a new ballpark, thriving downtown, not to mention the numerous community, ongoing community projects y'all had. This made Durham one of the most desirable cities to live in in the nation. As we saw, seen earlier, it was ranked highest all the time. I try to provide that service that matches the city, which the city gives to the community, but because it has become apparent that the city of Durham is unwilling to give the same level of care to its public safety employees, and it hurts. When the city gave us a raise in two thousand and seventeen, then again in two thousand and twenty-one, it hurt not to get put on the correct step. It already takes eleven years for us to top out, and we're not even able to maintain on the correct step. When I have my colleagues in neighboring departments only taking five to six years to top out. I had a colleague leave for a higher-paid department nearby, and he immediately told me I needed to come with him. I started to stay in Durham because I love the city. It's a process, and a thought process I have all the time of, did I make the right decision for my family? Right now, he's been with the city that he's joined for six years. He's still a firefighter. I'm a promoted driver that's been with the city for ten years, and he still makes fifteen thousand dollars more than me. I don't know if y'all realize this, the city of Durham, right now, to start and pay for the firefighters, roughly forty thousand dollars. We're one of the lowest in the state. For such a great city, I don't understand why we're such a low-paying department. Right now, in the city of Durham, the average apartment rent for a one-bedroom apartment is one thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars. At forty thousand dollars, that's more than fifty percent of somebody's income pre-taxed. How are they supposed to afford to live in the city that they serve and love? Right now, we work a hundred and twelve hours every two weeks, while other employees work eighty hours every two weeks. In a year's time, that's two thousand nine hundred and twelve hours versus a regular employee working two thousand and eighty hours. That's an eight hundred and thirty-two-hour difference, but my time isn't worth the same as others. And I hear that when you advertise livable wage, because when you did the livable wage, you didn't include none of the public safety, and it hurt. It says that my time is not the same as an IT specialist. My time is not the same as a lifeguard or accountant. My time doesn't mean the same. So I'll leave you with this as my time goes short, and I'll tell you a story. One day, I signed up to work an overtime shift, as many of us do, to try to get more income. So I work in a seventy-two, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. My wife brought my five-year-old son to see me on Saturday. As the baby boy, he loves me the most, of course, from the other two. But she brings him by, he's happy to see me, he loves it, and he cries when he has to leave. My son cried for thirty minutes home. He also cried when he got home for additional fifteen minutes, and my wife didn't even call me back. And the only thing he said to me is, Dad, I wish you was home. I wish you could spend more time at home. Now, I understand when I took this job, I'm going to miss some of my kids' birthdays, because that's the way it works. I'm going to miss some of the things they have at school, some of the programs they have, some of the ballgames and sporting events. But to sit here and say that my time is not the same as somebody else, it hurts, and it hurts deep. As my wife always says, if you know better, you do better. At this point, we've talked about this for years, and it seems like y'all know, y'all just don't care. I'm asking you for, I'm asking you this even, to please recognize our years of service and sacrifice we have given to the city by placing us in the correct pay band, so we may be appropriately and fairly compensated for our work. Thank you.
Mr. Ricky Williams.
Good evening. I'll try and keep it brief for you. So I've been with the city for twelve years now, and ever since I got here in two thousand and eleven, the city has kind of pushed this narrative of annual pay raises and a ten-step pay plan. And somehow, in twelve years, due to pay freezes and pay plan adjustments that leave us stuck in the same step, I've never made it past the equivalent of step six. And any one of us here in the blue shirts can tell you the exact same story. We've put in our time with the city. All that we ask is that the city hold up its end of the bargain. That's especially relevant when you've got every other city in our area, Raleigh, Cary, Greensboro, Wake Forest, Apex, Knightdale, the list goes on. All of them have starting pays higher than the city of Durham. I'm not talking about any little chump change here. I'm talking about ten, fifteen thousand dollars higher than our pay. How do we justify that? How do we justify that, as a city as wealthy as Durham, that we have one of the lowest-paid fire departments in the state? We see the economic boom that's going on here, and yet somehow, we still can't afford the, you know, our pay hasn't kept pace with the increase in rent and housing costs. Now, I understand, you know, at the top of the city, it's easy to get disconnected from what's going on down here at the bottom. But I want you to take it from us down here at the bottom, all of us in these blue shirts, the ones that show up to put out your fires and pull you out of car wrecks, provide emergency medical care, that you've got a real problem on your hands. Because anyone who's been here less than ten years or so doesn't have a whole lot of incentive to stay. And I'm not sure if you're aware, but Durham Fire Department is made up of about sixty percent of people who've got less than ten years here. So you've got sixty percent of your fire department employees considering other job options so we can make ends meet. All I'm asking you tonight is to place us in our correct pay steps and include us in a minimum livable wage of seventeen dollars an hour. You know, we're putting in sixty hours a week, twenty-four-hour shifts, two hundred and forty hours a month, and we still don't make the same livable wage as everyone else. We don't get overtime in that. So I'll leave you with that. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Ms. Carter, do you have any other, are there other two people? Come on up. Thank you, if you would just state your name.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Oop, hang on. Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Council members, Madam Manager, my name's Tousche Howard. I've been with the Durham Fire Department for twenty years, where I'm currently a captain. During that twenty years, I've worked on three different pay plans for the fire department. And I'm embarrassed to tell you, in spite of that background, it wasn't until recently that I thought to compare our starting salary to the Durham living wage. But I have now, and this is what it looks like. And we can give you a copy of this later. But the critical thing to know, the critical thing to know is that from two thousand and three to two thousand and sixteen, our starting salary hovered around the living wage and, on average, was about two percent greater. From two thousand and seventeen on, it's been in a downward spiral, to the point where- From 2017 on, it's been in a downward spiral to the point where even with the new budget that's been proposed, we're going to be about 2, about 18% below the living wage. Now, since I didn't think to do this until recently, I can't expect that city management, council members, or our fire admin would also think to do it. But now you have, I think, a really good landmark to work with, and you can understand the frustration of our people. The reason I came here tonight is, as a captain in your fire department, it is my sworn duty to do everything I can to protect this community, and I would be failing you. I would be failing you in that duty if I didn't come here tonight and explain to you that we truly are in a crisis as the other speakers have described. Fire service is the last beacon of hope for many people in this community. It's critical that you somehow find a solution to these issues and continue to protect that beacon of hope for those people. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, Madam Manager. My name is Jason Davis, and I am the president of Local 668. I'm here and I represent all of these people that are in blue shirts in front of you tonight. I'm proud to say that these men and women put their lives on the line every single day for the citizens, the visitors of Durham. We truly believe that the city itself needs to hold up their end of the deal. And when I say that, I say that every person out here in that blue shirt knew exactly what they were signing up for. We knew what the starting pay was, but when we were in the academy, they held in front of us a pay scale. And that pay scale told us that if we did our job and we did it well, that we would get our 5% merit raise every year. That's what we were told, and that's what was explained to us. That hasn't been done, and that seems to be the trend that keeps following year after year after year. When I say that, I say this dates back before any of you were on council, before you were a city manager, before you were mayor. But it's now is the time for us to fix this problem, stop this problem from keep getting worse. Because every year it goes on, the more it's going to cost the city to fix it in the long run. It's not going to stop. It's only going to get more expensive. So please, consider putting us in the right step now. That is what we're asking for to help stop this bleed, okay? Just to give you some idea of where we're at right now, on average, every firefighter, on average, is 11% behind where we should be in our pay structure. We have one person that is 34% behind where they should be at in their pay structure. 34% behind. That's not fair. How can we ask them to risk their lives, to spend their time away from their family, and not compensate them correctly? It's just not fair. It's not equitable. Everything we heard tonight was equity. Have equity in your firefighters. Make it fair for us. Because we don't care who's on the other side of that 911 call. We're going, and we go every time. There has not been a fire yet we haven't gone to. There hasn't been a car crash we haven't gone to. We worked hard through COVID. We showed up every day in COVID. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Davis, I think you indicated, or someone indicated, that there is a report that you all have compiled. It will be very helpful if we are able to see that report, if you will give that report to each council member by email. It will be very helpful to see the report that you all have compiled.
Yeah, we will gladly email all of our documentation that we have to everybody, all council members. I do believe that all council members have been reached out to from our pay committee. We have supplied a few different PowerPoints that describe the current situation. We do also have a very strong pay committee within our local that has actually taken the time to run each individual firefighter through the pay ranks and the matrix based on their hire date, their promotion dates, years of service, all of that. So we'd be glad to send that along to all of you. Again, thank you for your time, your consideration.
And I can speak for myself. I'd definitely be willing to meet with the pay committee. The more that you tell me, the more that you educate me, the better I am able to make decisions, okay? So please feel free to contact my office, and we'll be ready, stand ready to meet with your pay committee, and I'm sure others on the council will do the same as well, okay?
Absolutely. Thank you so much again for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other, I know that we're going to have some more opportunities for our firefighters to speak to us. Once again, I indicated, you know, this Thursday, please come back also, if you can, to sign up. The more, for me, the more that I hear, the better I am able to take it in, what you're asking for from us, and so we will have these very important conversations. I don't think that there is one of us up here who take you all for granted. Not at all. The work that you do, most of us would not do in our community, and you show up every single day, 24 hours a day. I remember having a conversation with a firefighter who said, you know, it's not many, not many city employees who wash clothes for each other. You all do that. And so I thank you for coming out tonight. I thank you for what you're doing with the city of Durham. We've heard you, we see you, and I can only speak for me. I will look in detail at the information that you would provide so that I can make a competent decision on what you're asking for. So thank you, and I'll open the floor for any other comments from my colleagues. Councilman Hosey-Hyman.
I think the firefighters know that I totally support them. My husband wouldn't be here when his heart stopped last year. And the first people who came to my house were firefighters. I have met with the local firefighter officials. They have given me the documentation, and in the pre-budget hearing, I spoke about it, and I advocated for an increase for the firefighters. I am glad that the mayor is going to look at the documentation that I've had, that I brought up at the pre-budget. I am in support of whatever we can do to get you on the right pay steps. Because again, my husband would not be here if it wasn't for you coming to that home. You were the first ones on scene and shocked his heart back, and he is now still with me. I support you.
Councilwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just really want to just send my heartfelt apologies. I think every year, I've had this conversation with many of those in the local, and it's been frustrating. I stand with you on trying to figure out how best to move forward. I know that I did make that request in my budget briefing to figure out what that would look like. I've yet to hear what that is, but I am hopeful that there are four of us on this council this year that would exactly push in making sure that that happened. I think I've done that push every year, and yeah, it's just frustrating. But I think, I think this is the year to get there. I think the last two years with COVID was definitely not the time, and it's time to catch up. And so I'm hopeful, I'm more than hopeful that we'll get there. Thank you.
Councilwoman Johnson, followed by Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight. I know we don't get, you know, 50, 60 city employees who all work really demanding jobs to come, you know, to a meeting on a weeknight unless we have a serious problem. And I want you to know that we hear you and we are, all of us, looking into this. Our city manager has already been asked to give us numbers for what this would cost, and we'll also be, you know, looking at your numbers as well. And yeah, we, you know, this is, I want you to know that you have made it very, very clear to us that this is an issue that we need to resolve. So thank you for being here, and thank you for your advocacy and your organizing. One thing I wanted to point out as we look into this issue with HR, 2017 is the year that we set our minimum livable wage on an annual increase. So prior to that, the increases were less regular, and since 2017, it's been increasing every year. And so it's clear that when we designed that policy, it was not, it was not good enough, that we've left out workers and having that, and having that regular, that regular increase that some, that somehow we didn't, we didn't fully capture what the need was in the city when we, when we designed that policy. It was really illuminating to me to see that chart and to know that that was when the policy changed. And I think it's that, you know, y'all, we have, by putting that policy in place, we're, you know, we're making sure that for most of the city, those wages go up every year, and y'all haven't had that same, that same increase. So yeah, so thank you again for educating us. It's been, it's been important for, to hear from you and to learn from you, and look forward to continuing to work with you to resolve this issue. I, of course, have also, you know, experienced the incredible services of our fire department. My grandma had a bad fall a couple months ago, first people on the scene, fire department, making sure she was comfortable, you know, checking her vitals. We had someone actually clean an emergency department room for her because there weren't any nurses available, and she's like, "I know how to clean this. I'm just going to clean it for you so you can be, so you can be comfortable in the room." So I also know personally how hard y'all work and how important your work is to this community, and thank you. I want, appreciate you with words and will, you know, hopefully also appreciate you with some money in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First thing, I've learned that there are a lot of Jasons that work for the fire department. I didn't realize that until tonight. I think I've probably spoken to two or three of you all. I don't want to use the language of, you know, our support, at least, or at least I know. I believe everybody on this council supports this, and the more you make it clear, the more we're going to respond to it. But you don't have to make it any more clear because the message is there, all right? I do know that there are some complexities around this, and I got to say this, that we had conversations, at least, I know some of us did have conversations with manager Paige, and she's responding. And I, there were some folks I was speaking to recently, like I said, there are a lot of Jasons. So one of the Jasons, I said, "You're going to hear from," I believe I said, "You're going to hear from Councilwoman Johnson or myself," because at the time, she and I had spoken about it. But I know that there are, there is a proposal that is being worked on. I heard your request that get HR to get a plan in place, and they're working on that. So I don't want the public in general to think that this has been ignored. It has been worked on, and it will be addressed, and I think it's very clear that this council supports you, not only with the sizable raise, but also getting you in the appropriate place. We'll make it happen. We do care, we do hear you, and I think that everybody, we don't have to separate that. I think everybody gives a damn. Thank you.
May I approach him?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I want to thank all of Durham's bravest that have come and spoken to us tonight. So you constantly run towards what the rest of us run away from, and we don't take that for granted. Since the time I've been on this council since 2017, I have not experienced one council member ever who has not been wholeheartedly supportive of doing right by our fire department and by all of our employees. When we did the 40% increase, we wanted the impression that we were doing right, and we were doing good, that it was a first step. We get a lot of data coming at us from folk in the community, from the staff, and I want to give our, because tonight, you don't want promises or posturing tonight, you want action. You want to vote. You don't want empty cliches or, you know, posturing or anything. So we hear you. We see you. Every time at night, when it's dark and we hear that plaintive wail of a siren in the distance, we thank God for you. We know that you're out there for us and holding the line for us. So tonight, our manager has heard, we've been having this conversation before, we've actually had this conversation tonight. I'm learning some things about compression because, you know, I've heard explanations that even addressing compression could cause more compression in some other areas. Wherever you touch the system, there's going to be things happening. So let us do the work, let our staff do the work. I'm looking forward to having something that, not just to make a speech about, but to actually vote on and address it. Durham's Fire Department is the best-trained fire department in the state of North Carolina. It's got the best certifications. That's why we get poked so much and why folk come looking for our firefighters. We need to make sure this is the best place for you to work. We want the best people, and we want to pay them the best. That's across the board. We hear you, we appreciate you, let us do the work. And our manager's heard you as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Caballero?
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just wanted to say thank you to the firefighters who showed up to advocate for yourselves. Agree with everything that my colleagues have said, and I look forward to getting the work done and getting y'all some raises.
All right, we will now continue with our speakers, other speakers for this evening. I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight, firefighters. We look forward to seeing some of you all, I hope, on Thursday, and I hope to see you again when we get ready to vote. Please make, have meetings with us. Some of us are still in kindergarten when it comes to compression and all those issues. I might be in the first grade just a little bit. So I'm going to need for you all to kind of help me to get up to speed again, but something's going to happen this year, if Elaine O'Neil has anything to do with it. So we have Ms., I'm sorry, Jasek, I don't want to pronounce your last, O-R-Z-E-C-H-O-W-S-K-I to come. Mister?
He said, "Who?"
Okay, thank you, sir. Natasha Williams will follow. Fenandra Garanit, I believe. Ph-A-N-I-N-D-R-A-J-R-A-N-I-T, and then Mr. Russell Pierce. All right, thank you all. I slaughtered a lot of names. If you'd give us one second to let folk kind of go out so that we can make sure we don't miss anything that you have to say, okay? You doing okay this evening?
Great. Good evening. My name is Father Yalcuk Zechowski. I'm pastor of Immaculate Conception Church. I'm also a-
Father, would you suspend the test?
Let us, let those, because we're going to have a trend. You know what? Do you all want to go ahead and try to take a break in this time? Or we're going to, let's finish this. Either way, we can wait for a second. All right, Father.
All right.
I think we might almost be there. Give us a second. Yes, sir.
All right. So once again, good evening. My name is Father Yalcuk Zechowski. I serve as pastor at Immaculate Conception Church. I am also a member of the Durham CAN Strategy Team. Our parishioners have been working closely with Durham CAN to address the inequities many of our members face every day. As pastor of over 2,200 Latino families, I often- As pastor of over 2,200 Latino families, I often hear from our parishioners about the adverse impacts the substandard housing has on their lives. Both the language barrier and economic inequality make it difficult for them to secure proper living conditions for them and their families. In the past, our church has hosted large meetings which included candidates for mayor and the city council as we sought to address the need for more bilingual city employees. Following this engagement, our mayor attended a housing inspection of an apartment complex where many of our families live. Because of her leadership, their homes are now up to code. So we thank you, Madam Mayor. Durham Can worked with the city council to increase the pay for all its bilingual staff last year, and we applaud this move. As we look closely into the issue of substandard housing, we realize that there is a need for an additional bilingual code inspector in Durham. Although the Neighborhood Improvement Services Department does have Spanish-speaking personnel, those staffers have others' full-time responsibilities and NIS only have the opportunity to address the inspections after they finish their other work. That means our families receive a second-class services or not at all. The funding request for a bilingual housing inspector has been part of the NIS request over the past two years. Both times, the request has been downgraded to a lower priority. However, this issue is too important for our Spanish-speaking families to keep waiting to live in dignified conditions. We spoke today with the NIS director and she told us that they are hiring two, they're hiring for two jobs which they hope to fill with bilingual staff. However, those are not code enforcement positions and moving them to inspections would create a capacity gap elsewhere. I stand here alongside many of my parishioners. There were sixty of us came, forty-five of our Spanish-speaking parishioners, some of whom are here directly affected by the issue of substandard housing. Yet we are joined by twenty-five-plus other Durham Can institutions representing thousands of other Durham residents who also support this funding, funding request for bilingual housing inspector. Please prioritize funding bilingual housing inspector, code inspector. Thank you.
Ms. Williams, if you will state your name for me, please, your full name.
Good evening. My name is Latasha Williams. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Pro temp, Madam City Manager, and members of the council. I'm a member of Abundant Hope Christian Church and an active member of Durham Can and a part of Durham Can's poverty research team. Over the last few months, our poverty team has been researching the negative effects that source of income discrimination has on families using housing choice vouchers to find safe and stable housing in Durham. During this process, we discovered that Neighborhood Improvement Services has requested funding in this year's budget for a full-time bilingual housing code enforcement inspector. On behalf of Durham Can and low-income tenants we are organizing with, I am here today to share with you why fully funded for a bilingual inspector for this year's budget is important to not only myself, but for the people who we fight for. From personal experience, working in property manager for the last, property management for the last three years and currently in this field, I have firsthand seen residents and potential residents and the way that they're being treated. Even after they have been approved for housing, waiting for as long as a month or longer for their inspection to be completed. This requirement is essential, but the wait time has placed a burden on what is supposed to be a smooth transition for families. Some have also been left without a place to stay due to their new apartment or house not being inspected in the required time. And thinking for myself, being a mom of two, knowing that I have gotten all the way up to this point where I sign on the dotted line and I'm waiting and not knowing where me and my children will go. Some have also, an additional NIS inspector could also help alleviate DHA's burden on timely inspection for families using housing choice vouchers. The city of Durham bears the responsibility of ensuring that its residents have access to safe and humane housing. Without an adequate number of housing inspectors, low-income tenants, particularly those of Spanish-speaking, are left defenseless of the whims of their landlords, which means they are subjected to poor living conditions out of the fear of retaliation far too often. Tonight, our desire is to increase transparency and accountability in tenant landlord relations in Durham and in funding a full-time bilingual inspector for Neighborhood Improvement Services. We believe the city council has the opportunity to do just that. Thank you.
And first name is P-H-A-N-I-N-D-R-A. Thank you. And then Mr. Pierce, you'll follow.
Oh, well, first I want to thank the mayor and the city council for having me and allowing me to speak.
If you would state your name.
My name is Fenandra Janty.
Thank you.
People call me PJ. I was born and raised in Durham, so I'm happy. This is my first time attending and I've enjoyed hearing all the aspects that you all deal with at every meeting. I wanted to show you all, I wanted to tell you all what happened today to my friends. This is for really the Durham Parks and Rec Department, but you all oversee that. This is what you call a pickleball paddle. My friends went to, we were playing at Duke and Duke, you know, they have, they have a committed space for pickleball courts. And today, my friends went there to play this morning and they were told by the Duke security guards that you will no longer be able to play here without a Duke ID. So my friends were like, well, where do we go in Durham to play? And I stated, I said, well, there's a place in Chapel Hill that we can play that welcomes us. And my friends were like, yeah, but we don't want to go to Chapel Hill. We wanted to play in Durham. So I ask you all, there's, it's a growing sport, it's the fastest-growing sport in America, and our friends in Chapel Hill and Raleigh are making accommodations for pickleball courts. And I would ask that you all consider this and put it, and put it as a priority in the Durham Parks and Recreation budget, as well as look into the Piney Wood pickleball situation and make sure that's A, gonna happen and it's on schedule and that we have the funds that, that I was told that Durham was committed to making, to make sure that has happened. Thank you for your time and listening to me today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you will state your name, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I am Russell Pierce. I serve as Executive Director of Housing for New Hope. On January 25th, one of the coldest nights of the year, nearly 150 volunteers were deployed in teams across the city and county for the annual point-in-time count to count those who are experiencing homelessness. We were grateful, Madam Mayor, that you and other colleagues from the council and also the county commissioners were with us that evening and were able to meet some of our community's most vulnerable neighbors in the places they currently call home. Just two weeks ago, this year's count was released and the overall number of people experiencing homelessness, it actually dropped by 18% from 459 to 375 over the last year. But that drop actually relates primarily to a 35% reduction in shelter capacity as spaces funded by COVID grants have been taken offline. Within that 375, though, of folks still experiencing homelessness, a deeper dive reveals some significant challenges. We continue to see an over-representation of African-Americans among those experiencing homelessness, 50% higher than our community's population. 68% of the population is male. We've seen 100% increase in people identifying as Hispanic being counted just over the last year from 14 to 29. We are seeing families who are unsheltered sleeping in cars many times, which is actually something we were not seeing three to four years ago. On the night of the count, there were 10 families, including 16 children, who were out in cars and other places outdoors. The unsheltered count itself, those who can't access urban ministries or families moving forward, continues to increase, up 105% since 2020, 300% since 2018. This year, we counted 158 people. The answer to homelessness, of course, is housing, and therein lies one of the greatest challenges. The stock of affordable housing, especially housing accessible to those at 50% AMI or less, is dropping as longtime rental homes are sold to become owner-occupied dwellings, as rental costs soar past, soar, rental costs soar past HUD's fair market rents that limit what agencies like ours can spend to support clients, and as properties are sold and converted to market rate units. This is a problem across the state. As the former head of the North County Commission and homelessness said last week, "Across the state, we are losing more affordable housing than we are able to create even with the boldest initiatives." On Thursday during your work session, Housing for New Hope, along with partners from Alliance Health, Duke Urban Ministries, Durham Congregations in Action, Durham Can, and actually a number of our partners are here with us tonight and I'd ask them to stand if they would. We will be before you on Thursday with a bold ask to match a commitment made last Monday night by the Durham County Commissioners to provide 3,025,000 to support the purchase of Carver Creek Apartments. This will enable the preservation of 48 units of affordable housing that are scheduled to lose all their protections at the end of this year. It would secure undeveloped land on that property that when combined with land that Housing for New Hope already owns, could create an additional 45 to 50 units of affordable housing. And it would support the phased development of a master plan supportive housing campus, including 120 total units of supportive housing with deeply integrated onsite services for our most vulnerable neighbors. Much like a hurricane blowing through, we first need to take action to preserve this property and the unique opportunity that it presents. And then just like in disaster response and recovery, there's a disaster risk reduction phase where we need as a community to develop a strategy for preserving the existing affordable housing that is in danger of being lost as protections end so that we can arrest the dramatic increases we are seeing in our unsheltered populations. We've spoken with great, great pride tonight on the amount of additional housing we are creating, but if we lose too much of what exists, it will become replacement housing, not additional affordable housing. Thank you.
We thank you all for tonight, coming tonight. That will conclude and I let folk kind of run over, so I know you all are watching, I did, but since I let the firefighters run over, I had to let everybody else. But when we come back, we will hold to our three minutes for our speakers, so I ask that you all be cognizant of that. And we will take our recess until 9:11 for 10 minutes at this time and we will come back and continue with our public hearings.
Families in East Central Durham are given a chance to weigh in on future improvements at Grant Street Park South. The park is located at 1200 Grant Street. Thanks to the Durham Parks Foundation and Clorox Company Foundation, future improvements will make the park more inviting and welcoming for all residents. The improvements being considered include benches, park signage, and improved pathways. An in-person workshop was held on May 4th to present ideas to the community and get their feedback. In addition, any Durham resident can complete an online survey through May 15th. Those who participate in the survey will get a chance to pick their favorite bench, sign, and trail options. More information can be found at surveymonkey.com/r/grantstrsouth. And be sure to follow our Parks and Recreation team on social media.
So one of the things that we are gonna do with teams, they have an opportunity to explore different volunteer opportunities. They'll be doing some, like the Southern, they're gonna be, they're gonna be doing some awesome stuff.
So let's get to the fun stuff. What do kids say five to 12 get to do at a DPR summer camp?
So we have all kinds of, all kinds of great opportunities. We have, we try and do as many field trips as possible. We have at least a weekly trip to a swimming pool, so the kids have the opportunity, opportunity to learn how to swim, play and engage with kids. Some kids from their neighborhood, kids that live nearby, and a lot of times, kids they've never met before. So it really creates some social connectivity for kids. It decreases the amount of screen time that they have. And it, and it shows them different activities that they can do with each other and led by our staff.
Nosotros de gente.
Women renmin.
Mia duma vio.
Hum sab log. We, the people, hold these truths.
To be self-evident that all men.
And women.
Are created equal.
And shall be afforded.
The inalienable right.
To fair housing.
The city of Durham and HUD are committed to ensuring that everyone is treated equitably when searching for a place to call home.
Everyone in Durham should be able to find a home they can afford. That's why Forever Home Durham is creating affordable, livable, and inclusive communities for low-to-middle income residents. From renting to owning, find out how the city is helping more people find homes right here in Durham. Learn more at foreverhomedurham.com. Learn more at foreverhomedurham.com.
All right, it's now 9:11, and we're going to move right along into our next agenda item, which is going to be item 27. All right, it's 9:11. We are going to move right ahead to our next agenda item, which is item 27, under our public hearings, Consolidated Annexation Harlow Point. This item is a, this public hearing is a zoning case, I believe, and we are going to receive our staff report at this time.
Hey, good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tim Middleton, and honorable council members. Alexander Cahill with the Planning Department, happy to be here with you this evening. Before, again, staff would like to state for the record that all Planning Department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with state and local law, and affidavits of these notices are in file in the Planning Department and are available upon request. A request for utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and initial zoning map change has been received from Tucker Ennis of Lennar, Carolinas, for one parcel of land totaling around .63 acres and located at 1019 South Mineral Springs Road. This annexation petition is for a contiguous expansion of the primary corporate limits of the city. The current zoning is RS 20 and Plan Development Residential 4.001, which was approved with case Z 1919 for 191 townhouse development. The applicant proposes to change these designations to PDR 3.949. This proposal would not change the total number of units, but it would simply incorporate a small triangle of the RS 20 property that is adjacent, and this would add to the development's open space and road frontage in the project. As a result, the overall PDR density is decreasing, but the unit count is not. In addition, the inclusion of this parcel as part of the development site will fill a donut hole in the city's jurisdiction. This request, case Z 2232, received a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission on March 14th, 2023, by a vote of 13 to 0. There are three motions required for this item this evening. The first is to adopt an ordinance annexing the property and entering into a utility extension agreement. The second two is approve the zoning ordinance, and the third is to approve the consistency statement. Thank you very much. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill. You have heard the report from staff, and I will now declare this public hearing open. First, are there any questions for staff from members of the council? All right, seeing none, I believe that we have one person we will hear from our applicant first, and Mr. Goesch, I believe we just have one person online. How much time would you need? And I believe that is a person of your team, Mr. Lana Lovelace.
He actually is a person on our team, yeah.
All right. You would be the only two persons who have signed up for this particular item, so you may go ahead, sir.
Sure, and good evening, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tim Middleton, and members of the City Council. I am Neil Goesch with the Morningstar Law Group at 700 West Main Street here in Durham. I'm representing the builder for this project, which is Lennar. I want to thank Mr. Cahill for his presentation. I'll be brief because this is a small case. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval for this item, which is not surprising if you understand what the project is. I know the application says 53.45 acres, but really, this is about 0.63 acres in total, because the other 52.82 already are zoned. Not only is it zoned, there also is an approved site plan for it, and it is under construction. So, the story here is that the previous owner was a holdout on the original zoning, of which Lennar was not actually a part of. Lennar bought the project after it was zoned, and once construction began, the owner of the .63 acres wanted to sell, and Lennar, so Lennar bought it from them, about a year ago, actually, as a way to help that owner out, and I guess the question is, why would you rezone? The simple answer is because this .63-acre parcel is a small donut hole in the city's jurisdiction. It's a tiny piece surrounded entirely by property that's in the city, so to fix that, Lennar is applying for annexation and rezoning it, and because Lennar already controls and is developing the surrounding property, the best way to rezone this small piece is to add it to the existing PDR. As staff mentioned, nothing about the original PDR really changes, other than the acreage, which increases, and as a result, the density, which decreases. Also, somehow, the original rezoning was approved without any design commitments. I don't really know how that happened, because I believe they should have been required. So, we've added design commitments that speak to what is being built out there already, and I believe the original zoning commitment was for a five-foot additional asphalt, five feet of additional asphalt to serve as a bike lane. NC DOT has gone away from that and instead favors a 10-foot wide multi-use path, or shared multi-use path, and so we've made that commitment on this. But the total number of units remains the same, total amount of open space, total amount of tree preservation, all those things remain as previously approved, and that really is all there is to this project. I will say that on the approved site plan earlier, the one I mentioned earlier, it has 172 units on it, but the current zoning allows for up to 191 units. Mr. Lovelace, who's online, he's estimated that by adding this to the original PDR, we might be able to amend the site plan and add a few more units, not up to 191, but a few more units, I think about seven. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Attorney Goesch. I will now inquire of our, let me just make sure that we have handled all of our speakers at this point, Mr. Goesch and Mr. Lovelace. Mr. Lovelace, did you want to have an opportunity to speak, sir? I think he was online. Mr. Lovelace, can you hear me, sir? I think you're on mute, but you would also have an opportunity to speak.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, I am here. I was just unneeded. I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I think that concludes our speakers for that, for this item on our agenda, and I will now declare this public hearing to be closed, and this matter is back before the council. Are there any further discussion from council members at this point? Seeing none, we are ready to consider the three motions that we have, and I do believe that our clickers are now working. So, the first motion that we will consider is to adopt an ordinance annexing Harlow Point into the city of Durham effective June 30, 2023, and to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement with Lennar Carolinas LLC.
Move is read.
Second. The move by Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Councilwoman Freeman. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
Madam Mayor, the motion passes 7 to 0.
Thank you. We now move to the second motion for our consideration, is to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of the Plan Development Residential 4.001, PDR 4.001, Falls/Jordan District-BF-J-B City Jurisdiction, and Residential Superbain-20, RS-20, Falls/Jordan District-BF/J-B County Jurisdiction, and establishing the same as Plan Development Residential 3.949, PDR 3.949, Falls/Jordan District-BF/GJ-B City Jurisdiction.
Move is read.
Second. The move by Mayor Pro Tim, and seconded by Councilwoman Freeman. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out, please.
The motion is unanimous.
Thank you. We now move to the last motion for our consideration, motion number three, to adopt the consistency statement as required by NCGS 160D-605.
Move to adopt consistency.
Second. The move by Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Councilwoman Jose Hyman. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
And the motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. We will now move to item number 28, which is the Consolidated Annexation Carpenter Preserve, but I do need to put a couple of things on the record at this time as I am preparing to call this item. Sometimes, in the last few weeks, Attorney Kim Rayburn informed me that the developer involved in the matter that is now under the auspices of the SBI and the FBI is Mr. Jared Edens. About two weeks ago, Councilwoman Jose Hyman told me that Mr. Edens would be on the agenda for tonight. She followed that conversation with an email to Ms. Sarah Young, and I will read it into This is from Ms. Young, sent on Thursday, May 4th, 2023, at 3:45, and this was her response sent to Councilwoman Monique Hyman. Councilmember Jose Hyman, this email is in response to your request for the source of the difference in recent middle procedures between annexations and rezonings. Hyperlinks are included in the explanation below for your convenience. The Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, outlines the procedures for these and other types of cases. UDO Section 3.5 deals with rezonings and specifically includes a provision in 3.5.15 that limits applicants' abilities to resubmit the same case for a year after the governing body decision unless there is some significant change. By comparison, UDO Section 3.27 covers annexations but does not include the same limitation. This means that applicants are allowed to resubmit the same, exact same, application immediately after the governing body decision. If there is no significant change to the annexation proposal, there is not much for staff to review, and the item can be ready for consideration again in a short period of time. We do not schedule items in the order of their submittal, but rather in the order that they are complete. Let me know if you have any further questions on that. Pursuant to that, after that, I reached out to the FBI to inform them, as I had stated previously, that I would not have any further comments, but to let them know that an item was coming before the council involving Mr. Edens, and that it would be for a vote. The FBI told me that their investigation was continuing, and they would not have a say and could not have a say in the ongoing business of the city. I then reached out to Professor Joyce at the Institute of Government and followed that conversation with an email to him and attorney Kim Rayburg, which I will also, at this time, read into the record. Good morning, and this was sent from me on Tuesday, May 9th, 2023, to attorney Monique, to attorney Kim Rayburg, attorney Bob Joyce at the Institute of Government, and that was also copied to Councilwoman Jose Hyman. Good morning, Attorney Rayburg and Professor Joyce. Pursuant to my conversation with Professor Joyce, so yesterday, I am following up on our discussion with this email. On Monday, the developer who has made the allegations concerning Councilwoman Jose Hyman will be on the agenda for a vote on a proposed annexation. I would like some guidance as to the possible recusal process for Councilwoman Jose Hyman in the event she chooses to do so. I do not believe that the developer has been publicly named, but his name seems to be an open secret amongst certain community members. I believe that Attorney Rayburg has stated that council members have an obligation to vote on all matters unless there is a lawful reason for not doing so. As you are aware, we are in the midst of an investigation involving both the FBI and the SBI. Professor Joyce suggested that perhaps a conversation could be had with Attorney Rayburg and the developer's attorney for input on this matter. He further suggested that I make a prepared statement prior to the matter being heard. Attorney Rayburg, I am seeking your input as well, and would ask that you respond to Professor Joyce and I to know how you think we should proceed in this matter. I am also copying Councilwoman Jose Hyman on this email as well, so that she can be aware of my inquiry and how we agree to proceed. I have prepared this statement in accordance with Professor Joyce's advice, and I have also forwarded those emails to Councilwoman Jose Hyman and the rest of the staff, which is going to be the last email that I'll read into the record, would be the response that we have received from attorney Rayburg, which was sent back on Tuesday, May 9th, at 4:10, and these emails, as I have indicated, have been provided to City Council and especially Councilwoman Jose Hyman, for her to make sure that she knows what the advice has been given. So, Attorney Rayburg sent this response to Mayor O'Neill. Hello, I apologize for the delay in my reply. I was in the Harvard Bloomberg course for the first five hours of the workday, followed by a couple of meetings. Now, to your inquiry. Generally, council members may not be excused from voting on matters before the council and shall not recuse themselves from voting except for matters involving the consideration of the council member's own financial interest or official conduct, or on matters on which the member is prohibited from voting under NC General Statute 14-234 or NC General Statute It is the responsibility and legal and ethical obligation of individual council members to assess whether they have a conflict of interest that necessitates their recusal from exercising their official duties. whether they have a conflict of interest that necessitates their recusal from exercising their official duties. In this instance, Councilmember Jose Hyman is in the best position to assess the voting on the agenda item brought by the developer who alleged misconduct in March is, quote, 'reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on her,' and that comes from NC General Statute 160D-109. A. Councilmember Jose Hyman has the facts in her possession that can address that specific legal requirement and thus inform whether she must recuse herself or alternatively whether there is no basis for recusal, and she has an obligation to exercise her official duties by voting. NC General Stat 160D-109 was newly adopted in 2019, so the process whereby someone can pose an objection to a council member's vote on a land use matter has never been tested in Durham. It is possible that the developer may raise an objection to Councilmember Jose Hyman participating in the vote in question. The procedure for how that objection is to be handled is outlined in Section E of the statute. The COA believes that the provision contemplates that, if challenged, Councilmember Jose Hyman should note the objection during the public hearing for the subject item. Based on the facts that are, again, largely within her possession, she can determine that she has a conflict and recues herself if the proposed development, and this is outlined, is likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on her. If, in the alternative, Councilmember Jose Hyman concludes that she does not have a conflict as determined by statute, she need not recuse herself. In that case, the statute provides that the remaining members of the council shall vote on her recusal in majority vote rules. If there is no statutory basis for recusal, but there is still uncertainty about Councilmember Jose Hyman's participation under the circumstances, Councilman Jose Hyman can request, and the city council can grant to her, an excused absence from Monday's night meetings. Specifically, or a leave of absence pending completion resolution of the referenced law enforcement investigations. Finally, I note Professor Joyce's suggestion that I meet with legal counsel for the developer. I do not know who that individual is or the precise issue that they might want to talk through prior to the hearing. Neither I nor any member of my team has ever been contacted by an attorney for a developer on this issue. I would, of course, make myself available for such a conversation to discuss the law as I understand it. Regards, Kim." Those are the items that I need to read into the record as a part of the prepared statement as suggested by Professor Joyce. So at this time, we will we will, this is, this public hearing is a zoning case, and we will receive our staff report. I'm Mr. Kay Hill.
Good evening again. Thank you, Mayor O'Neill and honorable council members. Request for utility extension agreement voluntary annexation, initial zoning map change has been received from Jared Edens of Edens Investments for one parcel of land totaling around 132 acres. This is located at 2621 Burton Road. This annexation petition is for a contiguous expansion of the primary corporate limits. The applicant intends to develop the property as 260 residential townhouse and single-family units and has proffered five building paths to be donated to Habitat for Humanity of Durham LLC. The applicant is not seeking a change in the underlying zoning district as part of this annexation petition. A direct translational zoning is one in which the existing county zoning is translated to the city zoning district upon the annexation effective date. While the current use of the property is vacant, future development under the existing zoning of residential rural allows for agricultural activities, single-family residential development on lots of one acre or greater, and conservation subdivisions. Commercial and industrial development is prohibited in the residential rural zoning district. As a reminder, three motions are required for a direct translation annexation. The first is to adopt an ordinance annexing the property entering into a utility extension agreement. The second is to approve the translational zoning ordinance, and the third is to approve the consistency statement. Thank you. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kay Hill. You have heard the report from staff, and I'm now going to declare this public hearing open. First, are there any questions for staff from members of the council? Councilwoman Jose Hyman.
Thank you, thank you. I just want clarity on, you said building pads. Can you just kind of explain what a building pad is for me? I'm sorry.
No, absolutely. That's a great question. So generally, it's the concrete pads that are poured that the home is going to be built upon, and that usually includes, in most cases, the utilities that are already put in there so that habitat can come in and just build the house with their volunteers.
My second question is, is it, I guess, procedural policy to change the name of a project? Like, is that, because this is the first time that that's happened, so I was just asking.
Yeah, we actually have several in the queue right now where they were, they've changed names or they've come back. And when, because there's no time limit on annexation, when it can be, when it's denied, it can come back, they need to come up with a new name so we can differentiate in the process, especially when we send to reviewer departments.
Thank you. That was just from my knowledge, because I didn't, that was the first time that's happened, that the name has been changed. So I just knew what the policy was that, in with that. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions from members on the line? All right. We'll now turn to our public speakers here. We'll first hear from Mr. Edens. Mr. Edens, I believe we have about about 13 speakers in opposition. I believe you are the only one speaking as a proponent, so you will be free to speak as long as you like, about at least 10 minutes or more. They would get three minutes apiece. So how much time would you like on the clock at first?
I'll try to keep it five or six minutes and some time for questions, if that's okay?
Okay.
Evening, members of city council, madam mayor, Mayor Protem, Jared Edens with Edens Investments. I'm going to do my best, I'm going to focus on the project this evening. I'm going to talk about the project. I've never requested, I've been coming up here for how many years? 20, 20, 25 years? Never requested that any members not vote or anything, never had that issue come up and welcome the full council's attention this evening as I focus on the project. We were back here in March, obviously, we talked about that. I thought we had a good presentation then, but sometimes plans don't go like you think. You know, you plan, we came in that night thinking, hey, we should have an approval. We're going to every project thinking that we're going to have an approval. I mean, we wouldn't start a project that we didn't think that ultimately we could find something to do with that property and do a nice development. You know, it didn't work out that night. But, you know, our options are to run away, never come back, or come back and try to come back with something better than what we had last time. And last time, I think we had a pretty strong application. So what we did, we took that time, we didn't sulk, we took that time. We immediately got our paperwork going, got our applications going, got community did an outstanding job helping us get things together. We've done this a lot. We know how to do it quickly, and we made some changes. You know, some of the feedback we got from Councilmember Caballero a couple of months ago was, you know, it'd be nice if we saw some townhomes on the site. That was some feedback we got. So we went back, modified the plan. Because, you know, for months, we were sort of letting the builders tell us, look, it's a single-family site, that's what it needs to be. And I agree, and that's what the market is, but, you know, the market's changing, we got some feedback. We had an opportunity to add some density, and we picked up another 20, 25 units. And with that added density, we're able to add some additional affordable housing, which we couldn't have done before. So we're coming back again with what I think is a better project with better proffers for the community. And I want to point out again, we're, you know, we set some, I set some precedents up here sometimes. We're helping to set a precedent that on annexation cases, there's now an ability by working with the utility extension agreement to get some zoning condition type commitments on annexations. We weren't doing that. You know, most time annexations are, when they're straight direct translations like this, they're boom, boom, straight county to city, and that's how it goes. But we did complicate this one, but we started that process. I reached out to planning and said, hey, can we get to the city attorney's office? Is there a way to do some affordable housing with an extension agreement? You know, those are good things. This project has a lot of good things, you know. It's a conservation subdivision. We've had people come up and say, well, conservation subdivision, it's really not a conservation, they're really not conserving. How are we not conserving it? Like, I can show plat after plat after plat of where at least 50% of a property's open space was conserved, platted, deeded to the homeowners association, and if somebody went out there and tried to cut a tree down, there'd be 20 people from Durham Planning Department coming out saying, what are y'all doing? Conservation subdivisions are real things. And when I was on Planning Commission, when this was brought into the code, I was on Planning Commission and part of the debate. My only complaint at the time, and it was lauded across Planning Commission. It was lauded by people who are now county commissioners. This is a great code. And my only complaint was, well, but we can't do townhomes with it. It's great. We get two units an acre. We conserve property, but we can't do townhomes. And over the years, that code has changed, and you guys have made it better. So just like, that code has gotten better, just like this project has gotten better. So I'm here before you tonight, presenting what I think is a really good project that is surrounded by city property on both sides, city utilities all around. The Planning Commission had a straw vote, maybe it was last month, on the proposed urban growth line. It's proposed to be out Cheek Road, past a large parcel that we're working on on Cheek Road. This is well within where this proposed UGA is supposed to be. You know, it's across the street from Panther Creek. I meet with neighbors all the time, all the time. Meet with neighbors, no one, they're not going to support me. Meet with neighbors, no one, there's going to be an uncomfortable conversation at the kitchen table sometimes, but I got to meet with you. And the feedback I got from several people was, look, we fought for Panther Creek. In 2005, when Panther Creek got zoned on Burton Road, it was zoned at 1.8 units an acre, and we fought for that, and that's what we wanted, and they were proud of that. And I was like, yeah, that's good, you know, because I remember I was working around here then, Ron Horvath was handling that. Well, we're proposing the same density. It's roughly 1/8 to 1/9 an acre, identical to everything around it. To me, it just seems to be a really strong application, and I appreciate your consideration. Be glad to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
All right. We will turn to our persons who are in person to, who have signed up to speak in person first. So we'll start with Ms. Rebecca Carpenter, Mr. James Chavis, followed by Ms. Donna Stanback, Ms. Pam Williams, and Pam Andrews. If you will come in that order, you will have three minutes apiece.
I am still Rebecca Carpenter. I still own land on Carpenter Road, and it just so happens that three sides of my property is surrounded by this development. I know this property personally because I have walked it, I have driven a tractor on it, and it has been in the Carpenter family for many years before it accidentally got out. I think, as I stand here, I am not against development in our city and county, but what really bothers me at this point is altogether Durham City is moving too fast and not taking time to have a plan for what Durham City-County together will look like in 30 years. And you are not thinking about what do we want to preserve about the character of Durham? Yeah, the character, because it's there, and it's been there. And every time we pick a certain kind of development, we may be in the distance sending people away from Durham. I think what I'm looking, and as I've gotten involved in the other, thinking about other developments, one thing that struck me last week, developers proposed 1,300 new housing units, and it's already come from the Planning Commission to you to be considered in the next few months. And when I put that with everything that's been going on and everything that I've seen, it's too much, too fast. So I believe I would want a better and slower way to develop so that we will not end up a city where no one wants to live. They don't move here for it to end up congested. Then this morning, I realized we're not the only people, and I do read the paper, believe it or not. They're hard to find sometimes, but I do read it. And this is how Raleigh is facing the same thing, how what the city was known for, that made its popular and made its good and a good place to live, is being destroyed by overdevelopment too fast. And they already have a movement to keep the character that will make people want to be here. The end. Oh, one other thing. I think we all know why it did not pass before. So we don't have much of a chance, but voting comes up in November. And don't forget, I am a Durham City voter.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. We turn now to Mr. Chavis.
Good night to all of y'all, because it is nighttime, okay? My name is James Chavis, and I'm here to oppose on this. And I have a question to ask you, Mayor O'Neill. Will you please explain to the Durham residents, along with me, with this type of magnitude and the census, is it just on Councilman Hyman or all of you, mayor and city council members? Especially to find the person who falsely signed your name. I, James Chavis, along with many others, would like for this to go on record as you have heard the plaintiff and you, mayor, read a statement. You reading the statement that is in investigation. We asking that investigation to be on every last one of you, mayor and city council members, along with two others, your city attorney and one of your staff, Sarah Young. So many of us believe some falsehood has been going on, and we would like all this type of development to stop until we get the true answer from who is guilty of starting this so that our city of Durham will stop being in a shame, and we can go forward. With all you black plus one Hispanic, which is considered minority, are ruining our city by sitting up there because somebody have done the wrong thing in making these plans to hurt the original Dermites of Durham, and it needs to be stopped. I would like you, the mayor, to ask the city attorney, can they be held accountable for voting on anything dealing with planning after the fact that this investigation come out? Because I will be pushing it if I'm alive.
Thank you, Mr. Chavis. We now turn to Ms. Donna Stanback.
Mayor O'Neill, our presentation tonight flows in a certain sequence, so it flows that it will be me and then Donna and then Pam, if that's okay?
Sure. We have, they have some numbers, but you may call them in the order that you would like. They would just state today, so I can keep up with my cards, okay? All right.
All right. All right. Can you see our screen? Okay. All right. All right. Do I need to hit a magic button, Alex, to make it full screen? Okay. Am I now? This is, this is, okay, this is a PDF. I'm sorry, this is the PDF, not the, no, it's PowerPoint. No, it's, okay. But anyway. You should be able to. Okay. I'm ready for my time. Okay, I'm ready for my time. Thank you so much. All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Pamela Andrews, 6108 Wake Forest Highway. Greetings to Mayor O'Neill and staff. We appreciate you all tonight. This development has come before us once before, and this one is not the one tonight, but it's one very similar. This is a conservation subdivision that's on the corner of Doc Nichols Road and Olive Branch Road. And you'll see that the blue there represents floodplains, and the green there represents wetlands. The one that's coming before you tonight has five tributaries. Panther Creek runs through the middle of it, so it does have similar attributes. There are seven sediment ponds required, 132 acres, up to 260 dwellings now, which has increased. But what I want to point out here, today I was on that strip of land that's remaining. Notice, the only thing that remains in trees is where there's wetlands and where there is floodplains. And the comprehensive plan says they want harmonious and respectful development. We need to design new developments to protect our remaining natural areas, including wetlands, floodplains, lakes, rivers, streams, mature forests, and native plants and animals that rely on them to live. I visited two neighbors there today, and those neighbors that I visited on that little strip of land that's left right there, the little bit of trees you left, one's got her septic system damaged and cannot be replaced due to blasting and construction, and another one right beside it has got cracks in her foundations. That'll be, I think, in some of the slides that we'll show you a little bit later. Our county residents are suffering due to this construction that's going along this strip. These residents, they're turning for help, and they don't know where to turn. Every day, we meet with more. We met with the fire department last week. In addition, I wanted to, oops, there's one slide that seems to be missing, but there it is, this one. Michelle Wolford presented this last week in your staff meetings, so I just want to quickly go over it. Masquerading, clearcutting, continued increase runoff in tomato soup, which is impairing our creeks. Two numbers really important under the nitrogen column, but notice this is from 2015 to 2018. So it's old data, it's five years old. But the thing, their developed land has increased nitrogen 40.7%. Stream back under phosphorus, the stream bank erosion has increased 47.7%, developed land 16.2. This was presented by Michelle last week, it's not my data. But you can see that this data is old. Look at the developments that's gone on the last year. Those numbers have gone up dramatically, I would very well assume. Lit Creek has already 10,000 dwellings on it right now, and it goes up every week. This was in the article by Sound Rivers just a week ago, May the 4th, about a week and a half ago. Lit Creek levels have gone up 3,900% above state standards. I was present when she threw the tributary meter in, it went over 2,000 instantaneously. It's supposed to be 10 for drinking water. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Donna Stanback, at 4825 Jimmy Rogers Road, Durham, North Carolina. First thing I'm going to go over is the environmental metrics. The input, oh, okay, there it goes, yeah. The input was minimal, so therefore the assumption is that the metrics are minimal, because that's what the ordinances state now. We've looked, and one of the key concerns was the size of the acreage there of 132 acres, and that there were no phases mentioned. And we would like to request that no phases be over 20 acres, as is being done in Charlotte and Wake Forest, and 25 acres in Cary. And we'd like to request an implementation of the new amendments, the Sedimentation and Erosion Control Amendment, TC 22000005, and Masquerading Plan and Tree Preservation Proposed Amendment, TC 2200004. And I'd like to have that confirmed by the developer. Will blasting be required, probably, because of the depth changes in the slope? The stormwater plans are minimal, and I mentioned, we request that this development have a 100-year erosion and stormwater control devices due to the triassic soil and the failing of existing requirements for erosion control. It's failing all over. If you come riding out in our community, you will see that, and it's just red clay all in the water. So we'd also like to request that there be a 100-foot stream buffer for the tributaries, which, as Pam mentioned, there are five, and a 150-foot buffer, wide buffer for the Panther Creek. Okay, I'm not having too much luck here. Okay. As stated, we recommend the phasing. The comprehensive plan, Preserve Sensitive Land Policy 82, discourages development that contributes to a loss of biodiversity, particularly through disrupted clearcutting and masquerading. Masquerading should be discouraged for new residential projects. And pictured is the runoff coming from these subdivisions. You can see how red it is, and contributing to different creeks impairment. Request conformance to Amendment TC 2200005 on stormwater basins. As this development is pictured up here, and it has seven retention ponds needed.
Stanback, your time, your three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't know how to get this black box. Oh, okay, I figured it out. Okay. Good afternoon, my name's Pam Williams, lifelong resident of Durham. I'm on record, my address. Donna was going to ask for here is that the developer confirm that the triassic-specific requirements be committed to for this project, that we have a larger sediment basin, longer dewatering time, stricter ground cover requirements on slopes, and flocculates required, as in the tax amendments and everything. And although this may be an old layout of the development, it is what was in the TIA for the development. Okay. I want to talk to you a little bit about project boundary buffers. Kind of had a conversation with the fire department the other day at this person's house in this development here. And a lot of people don't realize that the 20-foot width is not that there's no construction in that 20 feet from the property line, it's just that a building can't be built in that 20 feet. So we have 20 feet here, the boundary is between, the 20-foot boundary buffer is between the property line and the proposed building. Within the area, this area, retaining walls, drainage dishes can be built, and trees can be, may not be replaced. On this particular property here, this is the property line, they are digging 15 feet down here, within feet from the property line, and they're going to be putting a retaining wall that's 15 feet high, and no trees will be going in here because they cannot put trees behind the retaining wall. This is what a 20-foot buffer would do. We are asking, requesting that the developer follow the proposed masquerading and tree preservation amendment. In there, it requests no grading within 10 feet of the property line to maintain mature trees and other property lines. We are requesting a 30-foot border with a six opacity along the property lines, and state maintain rows to provide the vista and trees and the canopy. Right here are two examples of how they grade it, right up to the property line. It probably would have gone a foot further if this pole, utility pole hadn't been in the way. Again, here is a project boundary buffer here. Here is the property line just behind that opacity of a .2, as you can see, or a .4. Here's the single-family home. This is destroying our neighborhoods. Again, the UDO states that, there is, I got a dozen statements in the UDO where it says, protect existing character of the existing neighborhood. How are these pictures protecting the existing character? Also, for clarification, I would like to know, is this a conservation subdivision? Because it didn't say that, or I didn't understand that it was.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
If you will state your name, Ms. Williams.
My phone is not there.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm Rebecca Freeman, at 1818 Southview Road, Durham, NC, and I'm a lifelong resident of Durham County. Thank you for listening to me tonight. Good evening, Ms. Mayor O'Neill, and the mayor pro team, Mon Anthony, and council members. I'd like for you to look at this, and the area that's encircled in red is this project, and all the area around it is rural area. If this is supposed to be in a 15-minute walking distance of stores, jobs, and businesses, it's not getting it. The comprehensive plan says it should be rooted in connected communities. We want new development designed to respect, support, and fit into existing neighborhoods, and for residents to be involved in those decisions. Comprehensive plan states in the community goals and objectives, we want every resident to be able to access essential daily needs within a 15-minute walk, roll, or bike ride. And I come to you tonight saying that this is not possible at this site, there's nothing to walk to, and there's just country roads out there with lots of trees that's going to be destroyed by these developments. And I would appreciate your consideration of this. Also, I also like to ask, what qualifies as a substantial change in the developments? The prior development plan had 230 units, this has 260 additional 30 units. And I'd like to have some explanation of, from somebody besides the developer, what is a substantial change? Thanks so much.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Three minutes, sir.
Pat Pan, how do I cue the next? This is not my area of expertise, folks. I'm a scientist.
Do you want the next one?
Okay, that's fine. Good evening, my name is Thomas Freeman. My address is on record, I'm a lifelong resident of Durham County. Again, I rise to bring your attention to the damage that's being done by this type of development in Durham County. I draw your attention to the comprehensive plan of place types, where it stresses the site to protect and preserve streams, wetlands, floodplains, natural heritage area, and steep slopes. I emphasize the steep slopes, the topography of just about everything in southeastern Durham County is extremely steep, velocity of water is quite rapid, and the completely denuded vegetation on triassic basin soils has greatly exacerbated the problems that we have there. I'll move on. And what I'd really like to focus on, folks, is I'll characterize it as the unintended consequences of what you folks are approving. I draw your attention to my friend's property at 4,008 Holder Road, Durham County. He's sandwiched between the city of Durham upstream, the city of Durham downstream, and bless his heart, he's in the middle. The picture to your left is a home he owns there on Holder Road. He's had 14 inches of rainwater, floodwater, inside of his home there, that's his niece's home. The home on the right is his mother's home. It has a frequency of flooding three to four times per year. Would you want to endure this several times a year? This is what my friend, Mr. Tim Ellis, of Holder Road, endures each and every year. He's talked to the city, he's talked to the county, he's talked to the NCDOT, and they're all in agreement that it's either not my problem, or the NCDOT, it's not worth it for us to fix this. There are three 5-foot culverts under Holder Road that carries the water from upstream, those city of Durham developments, to the downstream area, which is Grove Park, another city development in the city. And he's caught in the middle, and he's suffering the consequences. His property is flooding with great regularity. And I wish he were here to actually share firsthand what he's going through over many years, but he's sick and tired, sick and tired of it. But I'll be his spokesman. Thank you very much.
Ms. Jackie Wagstaff?
I don't need the PowerPoint. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members, and my address better not be on record, because there's some people that's keeping up with this stuff. I prefer not to. I don't want these germs in here. But I'm going to attack this from another angle. When I saw this come back up on this agenda to be voted on, unfortunately, I thought it would fail again. I'm glad that the family emergency cleared up, and that our council member is back, but this is troubling to the community, that this project came up March the 7th, and it failed because one of the four people were missing, it failed. And then we had this barn swell, bonfire that erupted. Mr. Eden, your name has been brought up in this, but this bonfire over one council member because it failed. Now, it may be alleged, it may be just the way I feel, but that's what it seems like to the community. Now, in two days, this project was submitted, resubmitted, in two days. According to the developer, he said that they usually go back and resubmit, and they make it better. I beg to differ. I don't think that the project got better, I think the count got better. That's why he brought it back. He has four people up here, no matter what we say tonight, this project is going to pass. And I don't need a rebuttal from the mayor pro team or any of y'all to say that what I'm saying is not true, because we know what's going to happen. And it's unfortunate, because you have residents that come down here, and they bear their soul, and they talk about how these projects affect them and their community. And then what I did was, I went back to 2017 and looked at questionnaires from Javier, questionnaires from Jillian. I ain't seeing any on you, mayor pro team, but in those questionnaires, there was a lot of talk about how they would protect the land. They wouldn't vote on development that would destroy the land and displace residents. There was one questionnaire that Javier spoke about, that I'm just in disbelief that she's voting like this now, based on her 2017 questionnaires. So it's interesting to me that we have council members that are sitting here, just totally disregarding what the residents want, what the residents feel, and it's always that we are the policymakers, and we have to do this, because we're here to make policy. Well, you know what? What was the lady that said, she's a voter, right there? Make all the policies you want come November, some of you might not be making anymore. And in leaving, Madam Mayor, I want to thank you for everything that you do, and I hope we get two more years to work with you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagstaff. I believe that those are all our speakers in person and on the line, other than, we don't have anybody on the internet, is that correct? All right, Mr. Edens, if you will return, we are now ready for your rebuttal. And I believe you have a substantial amount of time, at least over five minutes.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. And I don't have a lot to rebut, because most of the comments were about other projects or other parts of town, but the comments about our project, Ms. Williams had asked for a 30-foot perimeter buffer, I think, but we offered 50 feet from day one, so I don't want to reduce it, we're going to, we'll keep the 50-foot perimeter buffer, that's another thing. That's another thing that we added here. There's some talk about masquerading limitations, but I mean, we're just going to comply with the code, you know, whenever that time comes. I mean, that's making its way through, and I think it's been improving along the way. And there was a lot of talk about the things that we're trying to protect in Durham, the creeks, floodplains, steep slopes. Ironically, if you go to the Unified Development Ordinance in the Conservation Subdivision section, it lists those very items as the things that we are supposed to be protecting with the Conservation Subdivision. It says floodplain is number one. I think wetlands may be number two, stream buffers three, steep slopes is up there. Those are the sites that you do conservation subdivisions on. The code is tailored towards that. I'm not calling it a conservation subdivision. The code calls it a conservation subdivision because that's what it is. So a lot of the concerns, I share these environmental concerns, and that's part of the reason we picked this approach. I mean, I could have easily, you know, it's the same process, you know, one, two, up to three years sometimes, annexation, zoning in Durham. And we could have applied for a zoning with slightly higher density and made a very reasonable argument with that, too. But I mean, I just looked at, there's a conservation subdivision directly to the west that we did, and then there's 1.8 or nine units directly to the east across Burton Road. So we just stuck with what we thought fit well, and appreciate your time again. Thank you.
All right. I believe that Madam Clerk has indicated that there is a hand raised on the internet. Ms. Wanda Allen. Ms. Allen, can you hear me? And if you could tell me, are you speaking to this item as a proponent or an opponent?
I'm against that development, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
I am. This is Wanda Allen, and I am against this development as a taxpayer.
Yes.
May I proceed?
You have three minutes, ma'am. And then, Mr. Edens, you may come back once she's done, sir, if you'd like. Yes, ma'am, if you will, go ahead, please. You have three minutes.
This is Wanda Allen. I'm a resident of Durham, NC. As a taxpayer, we should not continue to pay. We, as citizens in Durham, should not have to suffer from the developments. We, as taxpayers, are having to pay to restore our water streams such as Little Lake Creek, Creek Creek, Ellerbury Creek, Panther Creek, and Falls Lake. The stream restoration cost in 2021 $17 million. Now, we're being asked to pay $2.5 million for allergy scrubber, which is supposed to be used to clean up Falls Lake. Get this, FY '24 budget for the Upper Neuse River Basin is $1.3 million, and Durham's budget is approximately $269 million, which this does not include dollars from the Durham County. It is very clear that our streams and lakes are being destroyed because of Durham, because of the development, and Durham is using our tax dollars to repair it. As I just briefly highlighted, we have already put aside $20.8 million. Do we continue? Or do we allow these developers to expect us as taxpayers to pay? Or do we take the information and knowledge that we have gained and change our route? Let's pass the comprehensive plan before any more approval of housing developments. This would eliminate some of the harm to our environment plus provide housing. As I stated when I began, we, as taxpayers, should not have to pay to continue cleaning up after these developments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Mr. Edens, you may come forth to rebut. I believe those are all the names that we have. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? No more hands, right? Thank you. Ms. Edens?
Yeah, just quickly, I appreciate Ms. Allen mentioning the, I understand taxpayer costs and whatnot. That reminded me, the budget analysis for the site that the city also performed shows, I think, about a million-dollar annual budget surplus to the city from the developments that could possibly go towards some of these stream restoration projects in the future. I don't think our stream would need work in the future, though, because of the Conservation Subdivision, we have such a wide, one of our speakers asked for 150-foot buffer along. But all of our developments up to the south, all the open spaces by the creek, so it's several hundred feet along the stream, and I think that'll work well. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that is the last speaker that we have. I now declare the public hearing to be closed, and the matter is back before the council for any comments that the council may have before we consider the three motions we have before us. Looking to my left for any comments? To my right, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank our members of our community who have come out tonight, as always. This room is very small. Only a couple hundred people can fit in this room. And sometimes an echo chamber effect is created in this room. There are 300,000 people who live in this city, in this county. Each person up here legitimately represents thousands upon thousands upon thousands of people who voted for them. So I appreciate the mayor's calling for peace and humility as one of the virtues because I think sometimes when we're caught in our echo chamber, we can forget that there are other groups of people who are just as much a community as those that can make meetings and sit with us each night. We've passed many policies that are reflective of tens of thousands of people who do not have the privilege or the possibility of coming and sitting in meetings. So we love hearing from the community, but the community is much, much bigger than this room. We'll see. Much bigger than this room. This is a direct translation, and I, you know, since I've been on the council, these type of cases, the question before us is this. The zoning is not being changed. So what will we get left to its current configuration? Something is going there. And I wish that as a council member, I was as powerful as people think I am, and we are as powerful as people think we are. Most of the time, we are managing outcomes. We're not directing them. We're making choices about outcomes. This is the United States of America. When you own land, you get to make certain choices about ownership. Many of us in here are homeowners, and we're capitalists. And land ownership, you don't want government policy to trump the prerogatives of land ownership. You don't want that. So most of the time, what we're doing is managing outcomes. So without the city's advanced water systems, what will be built there will be on wells, septic systems, which are far less reliable, which come with their own set of issues. The character preservation that our UDO talks about does not mean character to the exclusion of new neighbors and friends. It speaks to materials. It speaks to aesthetics. It speaks to architectural flourishes and things of that nature. It does not mean that your neighborhood gets to stay the same way it's been for 50 years. There is no neighborhood in Durham that is not experiencing the impacts of growth. Not my neighborhood, not our inner city, no area is being left untouched by growth. And I know it's difficult. I lament every time I'm sitting in traffic, and it seems like the traffic is getting heavier as I'm trying to turn onto 70 off of Miami. There are more people moving here, and there's no neighborhood that has not been impacted. But with respect to this particular case, and I, you know, we don't get these kind of layups often where it's a, the Planning Commission doesn't even speak to these cases. They just pass a resolution because it's a direct translation. I don't know how to make that more simple. I respect when folks say that, you know, we're not against development. We just want it to be smart development. And it seems like smart development usually means vote the way I want you to vote. I mean, imagine me saying I'm not against community comments. I just think they should be logical comments. It would be pretty condescending and pretty insulting, not recognizing that there are different views, and maybe it's just different economic theories. Maybe it's a different understanding of supply and demand. As I did before, I'm going to vote for this direct translation because I'm more fearful of what we will get without the city's advanced sewer and septic systems than left to what's going to go there. And character means that we can still welcome other people. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Williams? I'm sorry, I had turned to my right first so to see, anybody else have any comments on this side? Okay, Councilman Williams.
Thank you. I'd like to ask, Staff, if you could just look into that, the blasting situation with the septic. Every time I hear that, it does bring a little concern, and I'd like to be reminded, you know, or have it looked into if there's someone's well that's being affected, just out of precaution. And if you don't want to respond tonight, you don't have to. It's more so just make sure we look into that. I will be supporting this case, considering it is a direct translation, at no surprise to some. But I want to respectfully, by the way, we have gotten to the point so much where we look at development, or we say builders, you know, as we've created this industry and it's just a few people who are doing it. Development is the practice of building structures, and it's happening all over the world, and Durham is one of the fastest-growing cities in the country. And we say if we keep doing it, we're going to push people out. The laws of logic, supply and demand is part of that, is a component. The fastest way to push people out is to make housing more exclusive. There is no such thing as putting a boundary around the city and saying you cannot come here. And this is, it's getting, I didn't want to say salin on it because I heard somewhere, a young person speak today and say you guys are genderifying the city, and there are high risers going up. And I mentor this kid sometimes, and they hear what folks are saying. If you notice, downtown cases don't even come before the city council. It just, it just doesn't. That's the truth. And we tend to have, we don't have any issue with development when we are in our place, but when it comes to someone else, then that's when it's an issue. And I don't want to simplify the concerns that our neighbors are in here speaking tonight. Those concerns are real. But also what's real is the fact that this is a very attractive place, the city, and there are people who are going to come. There is no such thing as city council, slow it down. We can, and when we do, it only makes the issue worse. It only makes the issue worse. So, and I know some people want to stop hearing me talking, but we've made a lot of time for a lot of people to say a lot of things. So I want to make sure that it is very clear, at least coming from this councilman. I'm not interested in pushing people out of Durham. And the more exclusive that we make housing, the more expensive it's going to become, and the more out of reach it's going to become. And that's not the character that I want to represent in this city. And that is what thousands of people voted me into this office to do and say. And we all have our prerogative, and my prerogative tonight is I'm going to support this case. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Councilwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to appreciate the speakers coming in tonight and many nights just acknowledging that our creeks and streams are talking to us, and I'm choosing to listen. That's all. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, we have three motions for our consideration this evening. Motion number one is to adopt an ordinance annexing, compromising, preserving to the city of Durham effective June 30 of 2023, and to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement with Eden's Investment, Inc.
Move.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Williams and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
The motion passes 4 to 3 with Mayor O'Neil and council members Freeman and Holsey Hyman voting no.
The second motion for our consideration is to adopt an ordinance amending the unified development ordinance by taking property out of the residential rural RR Falls/Jordan District-B/F/J-B county jurisdiction and establishing the same as residential rural RR Falls/Jordan District-B/F/J-B city jurisdiction.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Councilman Williams. Madam Clerk, if you would open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
The motion passes again with Mayor O'Neil and council members Freeman and Holsey Hyman voting no.
Motion number three for our consideration is to adopt a consistency statement as required by NCGS 160D-605.
Move.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Williams, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
And the third motion passes 7-0.
All right, thank you. We will now turn to item 29, which is to consolidate an annexation 751.
Good evening again, Mayor O'Neil.
All right, this is a public, this public hearing is a zoning case, and Mr. Kay, we are ready to receive your report.
Good evening. Thank you again, Mayor O'Neil. And this is, so we've received a consolidated zoning map change for 751 South. This consists of a utility extension agreement and a direct translational zoning. As part of the General Assembly-initiated annexation, the applicant is not seeking a change in the underlying zoning district. This is considered a direct translational zoning, and one in which the existing county zoning is translated to the identical city zoning district upon the annexation of the property into the city limits. In this case, the base zoning includes a development plan which was approved by the Durham County Commissioners in 2010. Staff gave a presentation at the work session on May 4th about the history and timeline of 751 South. Just as a reminder, on August 9, 2010, the Board of County Commissioners did approve the development plan, which you can see in Attachment F, with a mixed-use zoning district for the 751 South assemblage. In June of 2013, the Durham City Council voted to deny the annexation. Through the General Assembly accession laws 2013/386 and 2014/47, the North Carolina General Assembly annexed 751 South into the Durham's corporate city limits with an effective date of June 3, 2023. Session law 2013/386 does state that the city of Durham may not impose requirements or commitments on the property that are inconsistent with the requirements and commitments that are contained in the utility extension agreement. This utility extension agreement found in your packet and labeled Utility Extension Agreement I was adopted and included in the session law. The applicant now proposes amendments to the committed elements that are incorporated into the UEA. This is seen as Utility Extension Agreement Number Two in your packet or the amended UEA. The city of Durham tonight is holding a public hearing to impose the city zoning on the property and to adopt the required consistency statement in order to translate the county zoning into the city zoning. Additionally, the developer has requested changes to the committed elements of this project through the utility extension agreement. There are three motions required for this application tonight. The first one is to authorize the city manager to enter into either an amended utility extension agreement or for council to not adopt that motion and approve the existing utility extension agreement that's already recorded. The second is to adopt the translational zoning, and the third is to approve the consistency statement. This is a, it can be a confusing situation, so if there's any clarifying questions, anybody needs tonight, staff and the applicant team are available tonight to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. You have heard the report from staff, and I'm now going to declare this public hearing open. First, are there any questions for staff from members of the council? And I am also passing out a letter that the mayor's office received from, look at it, so that they will know what we're looking at. You keep that copy. I'm just, I think I might have passed all the copies out, but I wanted to tell, wait a minute now, from Durham Public Schools dated May 8, from Dr. Pascal Mombanga. So I hope that all of y'all have that, a copy of that letter concerning this matter. So I hope that all of you all have that, a copy of that letter concerning this matter. All right, and I think we have some questions for staff. We'll start with Councilwoman Johnson and that will follow by questions from Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick question, could you repeat what you said about zoning?
Absolutely. So the existing zoning is mixed use with a development plan. That is the county designation. This would be a direct translational zoning where it would again still be mixed use, but then in the city jurisdiction.
Okay, gotcha. I'm a little confused because I thought that the legislature like made it part of the city when they did the, when they, when they, you know, forced us to annex them, but that's happening now, not then?
That is correct. So what the legislature did was the county approved the zoning and then the legislature annexed with a future effective date, which is June 3rd.
Gotcha. So why do we have to approve it at all if they already did it and it's going to be effective June 3rd? Yeah, sorry, maybe this is, maybe, maybe this is a Don question. Thank you.
Don O'Toole, the city attorney's office. So to be clear, what is currently on the property is county zoning and that has a development plan. There is also an existing utility extension agreement that modified some of the committed elements of that county zoning. So when the legislature passed that first bill in 2013, one of the things the bill says is that it did not annex the land at that time. It said it would be annexed into the city effective June 3rd, 2023. So it was a delayed annexation date. And so what's before council and the legislature actually outlined this procedure in the statute? If the developer wanted changes in the existing development plan committed elements, those could be approved by council and it's council's option through, through a revised UEA. So that first motion tonight, it's basically, it's a motion for council to consider basically keeping the underlying zoning in place with modified committed elements that would be approved through the amended UEA. If council elects not to modify the UEA, then you move to the alternative motion, which is truly just a direct translation from the county. And to answer your question, why is this before you at all? The existing zoning is county. The legislature says the land will be annexed into the city June 3rd, 2023. What would happen on that date is the land would be in the city, but there's county zoning. And if city council took no action, within 60 days, the land would have no zoning at all. Is that, and, and planning staff pretty much tells you that each time you get one of these consolidated annexation items. The unique thing in this consolidated annexation is council is not voting on the annexation. The legislature did that. But you have all of the other elements.
That was super helpful. Thank you.
Answer my question.
All right, any questions? Okay, Councilwoman Freeman?
The question would be for Dan as well. Just to try and make sure I understand, so the current county zoning actually includes specifics around a fire station and land for the Durham Public Schools. And if we were to do nothing, those things would still move forward and the county doesn't, well, the Durham Public Schools doesn't need that land for the school. It's not in the right place. It doesn't provide the right, anyway. And we missed an opportunity to actually have the developer proffer or include items in that utility extension agreement. I just want to make sure I'm following correctly.
Okay, to be clear, in, in the existing zoning, there are committed elements.
Committed elements, I'm sorry, that.
Yes. So there, there is a committed element for a donation of land to the city or county for a fire slash EMS station. In addition, there is a committed element for the donation of land to the Durham Public Schools. I do not want to speak for Durham Public Schools. I think the superintendent did that through the letter to the mayor and council. But the developer and DPS have discussed revising the school, the school land donation with the proffer that's currently part of the amended UEA. And I believe that's a million dollar, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
And then the other thing is the land that was supposed to be donated for a fire EMS station, the committed element as rewritten in the revised UEA makes that a clean donation of land to the city. There was some question about if the city received that land, whether it was obligated to put a fire slash EMS station there. The fire department, it's my understanding, has indicated that that parcel really wouldn't work for a fire EMS station. So the revised committed element gives the land to the city with no requirement that it be used for anything specific. It would be whatever the city wants to use the land for.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Colleagues, your honor has had to step out for a moment. I'll be assuming the gavel until she returns. Did any other colleague have any questions or comments for staff? Seeing none, this public hearing is open and we'll turn now to hear from the representative of the developer. Good to see you, sir, if you'll come up.
Mayor Pro Tem, thank you. Good to see you. Great to be with you.
How long do you anticipate needing Mr. Cunningham for your presentation?
I have some slides, but some of them anticipate questions that were raised at work session. And I've got good materials here to address some of those questions that were raised. How about I glance through those slides and, what did you say, Alexander? I could do seven or eight minutes, but I want to make sure that I hear this council. Mayor Pro Tem, you used the word humility with respect to the earlier conversation and this developer is here with humility to listen and address questions and concerns to try to make what is brought into the city even better than what its history has been and what the county approved 12 years ago, 13 years ago. I want to make sure we have ample time for that. I will present and then I want to make sure you have time for questions.
Thank you for that. And I'll, I'll make sure that our, my colleagues have ample time to exhaust all of their, their inquiries. Let's start with 10 minutes, please, on the clock and you may begin.
And Alexander, how do I get the slides up here? Just one moment.
Actually not very tech savvy.
Ah. You came to the wrong place if you're looking for tech savvy. All right, hopefully these will, these will go. All right, thank you. This is, members of council, this is the site. We hope that you have some degree of familiarity. I'll zero in on parts of it if you have specific questions about them. It's a mixed use development. Part of what's already been built by this local development team is housing townhomes on that site. There is additional commercial development that is scheduled for this site. And one of the main things that we are doing is we're modernizing these committed elements. We're bringing them forward and we're decreasing the intensity of uses that are on this site. Planning Department, and by the way, I give them incredible compliments for the engagement we've had over the last six to eight months. The attorney's office on a very complicated matter that's in front of you in terms of its procedural history. What we're proposing to do is move away from the intense commercial and retail development on this site and listen to the voices that have said we need more housing, quality, affordable housing in this community. In doing so, we are maintaining the environmental protections. We are making sure that we limit the impervious surface as it has been, that it maintains 50 acres of open space as it has been, that there are 41 acres of tree coverage area as there has been, but we're cutting in half the commercial and the office out there. We're asking for the opportunity to do more, what would be apartments. Very keenly illustrating why we need to modernize and update these elements. Now, we've been through multiple recessions. The developer has faced all sorts of headwinds. We've been through COVID, folks don't want to work in offices like they used to. But we were in discussion with the city about the fire station site. 15 years ago, before President Obama was inaugurated, the first time this was conceived and proposed, at the time, the volunteer fire department, Parkwood Volunteer Fire Department, was fire service for the southern part of the county. They had to pull through a neighborhood in order to come out and address a complaint. And by the way, God bless our firefighters who are here tonight. We offered to donate, the developer offered to donate this site on Highway 751, 0.87 acres to develop a fire and EMS site. They said yes. It was backup language there for the Durham Fire Department to receive this site. We have, are willing to donate it free and clear, our offer, to make it free and clear to the City of Durham, to do with whatever the City of Durham would like. By the way, there are 300 apartments proposed right behind that site. I believe it's either the 300 or the 490 units that are coming through planning board. But we are totally willing to lift the restrictions on that site, but we need your approval to do that. Otherwise, the language said it is being donated for a fire station. The city has a fire station. Number 18 is three miles in one direction. Number 16 is three miles in the other direction. The city's telling us it does not need this site or it's not suitable for what they would like to do. We'll lift the restrictions. The next item here is the school site. We have been trying to give the school site to the Durham Public School System for eight years. We did, in December of 2014, we, they said we can't build a school at this point. In 2017, we asked, and the county commission voted and approved, an acceleration of the school site. And Durham Public Schools couldn't accept it. In 2021, we actually, we went to them again and said, we're going to be in the city in two years. Can you bring us a plan? They said, they left it out of the bond package again, for a second time, did not include it in the bond, school bond package. So we then put together a team and offered to build a school for DPS and lease it to DPS for 40 years and then give them the school building after that. They couldn't accept that either. So we went to Durham Public Schools and said, what are we going to do? And they said, we'll give you a choice. We will sit on the land until December 31st of 2045 and do nothing with it, or you can donate a million dollars to Durham Public Schools. That's why the proffer is in front of you. That's why we are trying to do right by Durham Public Schools. This is their request. April 14th, 2023, as with all elements of this development that we want to modernize and bring forward, we're trying to get to yes with stakeholders. We're trying to engage the neighbors in constructive dialogue, including some neighbors who historically had problems with this development. What were one of the major problems that neighbors had with this development? Traffic impacts. We, in this new proposal, reduce traffic impacts by 45% by changing the mix of uses in the development. We're bringing down the commercial, we're bringing down the retail. That has a very substantial impact on this site in the neighborhood. We think that's what the neighbors are asking for. We think that that is good governance. We think it's better for every stakeholder involved. Now, when we signed up to do off-site traffic improvements under our TIA that was run in 2008, the total budget for off-site traffic was $7 million. The developer has already done $7 million in off-site traffic improvements. And because we were going into this process, we ran a new TIA with the new proposed mix of uses. That plan is, came through, the Department of Transportation signed off on that TIA and what we need to do. City of Durham's Transportation Office signed off, actually, Durham City Transportation Office added two projects to the list that nobody else said needed to be done, but we said yes. Why? We are trying to get to yes. Very humbly, trying to make this project work for all stakeholders. There are at least eight and a half million more dollars in off-site traffic improvements that that TIA recommends and we said yes to, and they're in the amendment in front of you as well. Now, with respect to affordable housing, we recognize this is an incredibly important prerogative in this community. We first think by changing the mix of uses to more housing, that we are adding to the housing stock, first of all, in what would be apartments. Second, we are modernizing the language. When this developer agreed to do affordable housing at 80% of the area median income for 15 years, in the year 2008, when the developer agreed to that, there was no affordable housing policy in the City of Durham. This was cooked up, the best efforts possible between, between planning and the legal office and, and the developer's attorney to come up. But the language is not what your modern policy is. So we are modernizing the language, working with community development to do so. We recognize because we have the environmental restrictions that we have on this site, the limits to impervious surface, that we're building structured parking decks, that in order for us to do, doing affordable housing is incredibly, incredibly difficult. That's part of why we are asking for the option to make a substantial donation to the Dedicated Housing Fund. And in fact, the developer has asked me, particularly after hearing about, from stakeholders tonight, and we've done some research, Councilwoman Freeman, we pursued every avenue that we discussed to make, to exhaust every option. We're prepared to increase the amount that we are putting into that fund, not to $2 million, but to $3 million. That is our proffer. That's not what's in the writing right now, but that is our proffer. We are trying to get to yes under a development plan that means structured parking. What does structured parking mean? $25,000 per door. But we're committed to preserving the environmental consistency of this project. We are, we do not want permission to go knock down more trees or take up open space for the surface parking that other people are using to get to the affordable housing proffers that we have seen. We are trying to get to yes. And I'm happy to answer questions about that. We've talked about, let me, let me pause there. I'm happy to take questions. Mayor Pro Tem, I have appraisal numbers on the site for the DPS you asked at work session. I've got the number that the county assigns to it. I have additional appraisals from neighboring properties. We didn't have time, nobody had time to appraise this site. Durham County puts $890,000 on this site. We're offering a million. I have, I have authority from the developer to increase that proffer to 1.5 million. If we were just going to look at the value, this is a slide, these slides aren't even coming, okay, here we are. The 2023 assessed value of the site undeveloped $500,000. The 2023 market value adjusted, 890, which I referenced. If we go through the appraisals that the city's own real estate office has used in condemnation, we're between 148 and 505,000. We think a proffer of 1.5 tonight is, hopefully honors the commitment that we've made to the Durham Public Schools, and that is a half million dollars more than Durham Public Schools even asked for. We're here humbly trying to get this right. We're happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Your honor, did you want to reassume? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. We'll, we'll turn now to first our speaker. I have one card in chamber, Joshua Allen. Is Joshua here? Hey, thank you so much for being with us. If you'll approach and just give us your name, you'll have three minutes. We appreciate you being with us.
Thank you. My name is Joshua Allen. I am a resident of 751 South. So I generally actually am in support of what's being proposed in the amendment, but I do have some issues with it that I want to have addressed. I feel like we were just made aware of this amendment 17 days ago. This very complicated language and most of people do not have the expertise, including myself, to properly understand the implications of what's being changed. And so I, I think that it is disingenuous of the developer to ask us to go forward with this amendment with such little notice and with such little engagement. They offered us one meeting, which I had They offered us one meeting, which I had to miss because of such little notice. I was able to watch the recording and try to get educated on this, but I think that if we're living in a democracy, we need time to talk through this. And it sounds like they've been working on this, as Mr. Cunningham just said, for six to eight months, and no one in the neighborhood knew anything about it. A zoning sign went up maybe a month ago in front of the neighborhood. Our HOA management company told us that it was just for the automatic rezoning to the city, told us nothing about this amendment that was coming. So we want discussion. They're asking for an additional 450 residential units. They're not committing to any additional open space. They will, I can tell you when he rebuts this, he's going to say, "There's 55 acres of open space." There's not. That's almost all woods. There's very little plots of land in front of some houses. Our neighborhood looks like Trinity Park. Everything, the houses are right on the street. So there are some parks, but they're little, and there is not a sufficient place to, say, go throw a frisbee or football, hold a town concert or something to that effect. And so I think if they add 450 units, they need to add some space where these additional thousand people probably would have space to gather and do things outside and not just be stuck inside or use just little tiny plots of land. People are not going to be walking through the woods. So we need space. So that's really the gist of my objections to this. I think they should engage us, and they should talk through this with us instead of just trying to ram it through city council with very little notification. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Allen, thank you so much for being with us tonight. We'll turn now to our neighbors on line on our platform. And Madam Clerk, the first name I see is Anugerada Sapapati. If you'll make them hearable. Anugerada, can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. I second exactly what Mr. Powell said a minute ago, sorry, Joshua Allen said a minute ago, that we wanted to have more engagement as to what the changes are going to be. We don't really understand where these new apartments are going to be. There is no new map that has been given to us. So it's just left out there. And as he said, the houses are extremely crowded, very, very close to each other. So we really have no idea where the new density of 450 new houses are going to be. And also, we were promised that there would be dining and, you know, a small retail store and fuel store and other things within walking distance, but none of that has actually developed. There are just houses and houses going up with no attempt to make any sort of commercial development at all, which was a promise when the houses were sold. So we just wanted more clarification from the developer. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us tonight, for your time. Madam Clerk, the next name I have is Karayala Ravindra. I do not see them in the queue. I have Kim Young, who I do not see as well, and Philip Jones, who signed up, I do not see as well. All right. Mr. Cunningham, did you want to respond to anything that you've heard thus far?
Just briefly, we respect both of those voices that we just heard, and have done as much engagement, and we're trying to do more engagement. There's an HOA management company, and we recognize that some residents take issue with the HOA management company. We have regular HOA meetings where we try to address questions. I actually don't represent the HOA. I've listened in myself. But then as a part of this process, it was not, I don't believe, required that we have a community meeting before, coming before you, because it's this weird utility extension agreement thing, but we agreed to do that anyway, in part because we want this dialogue. We want to engage with the neighbors. We want to hear from neighbors. And much of what we have heard, I've responded, I gave out my personal phone number, email address, and have received and answered, I think, every text, email, and phone call that has come from a resident over the last several weeks since we've had those engagements. We want to hear. We want to listen. We want to make the project better. We want to make the community better, and we're very committed to the live, work, play concept that drove this idea from beginning. We would love to be ready to open the stores that the last speaker asked about and are trying our best to bring those to the market.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else in chamber who has not spoken on this item who would like to speak? This is a public hearing. Seeing none, I'm going to now turn to my honorable colleagues for any questions or comments they may have for either the resident or the developer. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just for the gentleman, specifically on the space, I hear you speaking to the forested area as considered open space. Can you address that part as well?
To Councilwoman Freeman, so first, let me see if I can get to the picture, if that's possible. I'm seeing something on my, so this is a map of the site, and you can see something like half of it is preserved open space. If there are additional apartments, there will be additional amenities within those apartments. There's not really a place to go with additional green space or open space. You know, we went well less than what the ordinance would allow back 12, 13 years ago and made a very, very serious commitment to preserving this live, work, play idea that, in fact, there are trails that the Corps of Engineers actually won't let us connect to, but if you go out of the woods, you can get back to an Eagle Spur Trail that takes you back through these Corps of Engineers protected areas. They're protected areas. Obviously, the Corps of Engineers doesn't want us to, but we want folks in the neighborhood. In fact, there's a 10-foot-wide corridor through it all that is, it's kind of hard to know where it starts up on the road, and it's, we've got to connect it in the middle. But it's been part, Councilwoman, of an effort to honor the land that this project is built on. I would add as well, in 2017, part of what we went to the county commission about after the state gutted the Jordan Lake rules was working with county leadership to develop a stormwater mitigation program that they adopted, that we have funded with a payment plan, like we have to do with all of our stuff here, to meet the highest, most stringent environmental rules of any project that we know of in this area.
Thank you. That's helpful. One more question. On that slide that you're showing, I can't see if there's any public transportation amenities in place, but can you speak to whether or not there'll be bus stops throughout this?
We have committed to bus stops. In fact, some of the language that's tweaked makes them like modern bus stops. 15 years ago, when we proposed them, they had these certain snazzy amenities to them that we needed to change because apparently people don't do bus stops the way now, like they did 15 years ago. There isn't bus service there yet, but we have committed to bus stops in hopes that at some point there will be connectivity down there.
And then I heard you commit to 1.5 million. I want to first ask if you would move up to 2 million?
I can inquire. We, look, a million is more than what the Durham Public Schools asked for. 1.5 is more than any market value.
Not doing my job if I'm not making you sweat. I would say that I did want to ask if you would remove the requirement that the additional 500,000 be directed to a building only, so it could be partitioned so that the 1 million went to the building and the 500 could go to whatever DPS. And I don't see any flags getting raised up.
Councilwoman, we would be very amenable to that. And in fact, the language in there dedicating it to the building fund was DPS's request for the 1 million dollars. And by the way, are y'all getting this? Because it's not in my notes yet.
And I did want to say to the general public, I am very familiar with Mr. Cal Cunningham for his runs and many races, sorry. But I do not have a previous relationship outside of that, and I do appreciate you reaching out to let me know that this was coming. It is unfortunate that the general legislature has put this on our docket in this way with that June 3 date. And that problem with the, I made a note, the no base zoning district going throughout the summer could be problematic. I do have a lot more questions, but I'll just let my colleagues weigh in.
Happy to address them.
Thank you. Was there anything else, Councilmember? Thank you for those great questions. Colleagues, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Caballero, then I'll come to the other end of the dais. Councilmember Caballero.
This is actually a question for staff. I'm just, I'm going through the, it's the attachment with like the table with all the traffic commitments, and I just want to make sure I'm reading it correctly. So most of it's straightforward, but there's the part that's like the widening on 751 that's to Stagecoach, that, all of those types where it's like, it needs to happen, it's not in the current zoning, it's not funded, but was it in the original proffer?
Yeah, so I can take a stab at that, and Sean Egan here is here as well. There were two commitments that were negotiated by Mayor Bell when this project initially was voted on by the county commissioners. Those two transportation improvements were the widening around 751. Because they were proffers at the time, they are not, and they're offsite, they're not part of this new updated traffic impact analysis and therefore are not required.
But it can still be added. There's nothing, there's nothing that, you know, prevents us from doing that.
Correct.
Could you, and maybe, and it's maybe for transportation, could you give me a potential ballpark number of what the cost of those are?
Hi, Sean Egan, Director of Transportation. Good evening. Transportation staff reviewed the value of the site plan commitments that were included, that are included in the current zoning, and estimated $19 million would be required to complete the improvements as they're described.
And right now, it's unfunded, so there is no plan to have those $19 million worth of improvements, other than what was originally in the original utility and extension.
Right. The plan was for those improvements to be delivered through this project.
Thank you. This is a question for the developer. This is to your slide on affordable housing. I really appreciate the time on Friday when we met, and I also want to appreciate Alexander Tejha, who took the meeting with me. And just also the presentation at work session, last time I missed it, but I was able to watch the video and it helped me kind of get some clarity on this. The slide that you had around affordable housing, is that a change from what we talked about on Friday? Because on Friday, it was just, it was, if we can build the affordable units, we will, but if we can't, then we'll do an amount to the Dedicated Housing Fund.
That is correct, and it is formulated in the amendment as the developer's option. We would like to be able to deliver these on the ground, and we've tried. In fact, we did deliver 34 units in the year 2020 on the ground. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
Do you mind pulling that slide up just so I can reference it?
It's on my screen.
Thank you. Okay. So, okay, so the 34 units were delivered in 2020. So the goal is to do the build-out, but if not, then it would be the $2 million contribution to the housing fund. I just want to make you understand, I understand.
Yes, ma'am. And by the way, we increased it to 3 million. It says 2 million here, but we're proffering, and that's news.
Well, it says 2 million on the slide.
It does.
So you're saying if you could not, that your number one goal is to complete the actual 10% of actual units. If you can't meet that, then it would be a $3 million contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund.
It's formulated as the developer's option in the language. The language is 80-15 in either event, and with the amendment being the developer's option to donate to the fund.
Okay.
For instance, so we pursued several affordable housing developers at the request of Ms. Freeman and have been in discussions with them about, at least one through our professional, the folks that advised this team on how to do this. And when we talked with them about structured parking decks and the cost of structured parking decks, they said they don't know any project that uses structured parking decks and can meet affordable housing criteria. Now, the only way that we don't do structured parking decks is if we go knock down more trees and take up more open space with surface parking, which is very cheap. It's $3,000 per door. Structured parking, which is more like $25,000 per door. So we're trying, and we have been trying for years, and we're asking, humbly asking for an option for the developer to donate in lieu.
Thank you. Those are all my questions for now.
Thank you, Councilmember. Going to the other end of the dais, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Got a couple of questions for staff and then a couple of questions for the developer. Hi, thank you. Could you confirm the appraised value of the land that was to be proffered to Durham Public Schools? Do we have our own appraisal on that?
So we do not have our own appraisal. That's not something we typically do. However, the applicant did at councilmember's request.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to see that. I mean, I'm a little concerned because y'all have an incentive to make that appraisal lower, and I'd rather, you know, I would rather have a neutral party have done an appraisal. Could you, could you, you might not be the right person to ask this question, but, and maybe someone needs to go look this up, but I'm wondering how much it would cost the city to subsidize 130 units of affordable housing based on their initial commitment of 10% of the 1,300 units that they had initially proposed? Is that something like someone could, is there someone who could calculate that for me, based on like some recent affordable housing proffers?
I don't know if we can, we can consult on that. I can give a comparison with the novel University Hill Development Agreement. That proffer was for $2.8 million to construct and fund the gap in the affordable units, and that was for 66 units.
Okay.
But we can go and see what, we can look up what y'all are debating.
Okay. The one that we approved for, I'm trying to, the most recent affordable housing deal that we did was, it was going to cost $20 million to do four projects, but I'm not sure what the total number of units that was. But I'm trying to think of like a per, I'm trying to figure out what a per-unit like subsidy average could look like. So yeah, if anyone has any insight into that, that would be, that would be great. The other question is probably for Sean about traffic improvements. Hi. Thank you. Do you think that the improvements that were committed to before that are being, that they're attempting to withdraw are going to be, are still needed? Like with the changes that they're making in this proposal, are we still going to need to do those improvements someday, and is the city going to have to pay for them?
So there have been some changes to the traffic analysis as a result of changes to the proposed development, but there's tremendous interest in development in this part of Durham. So as we look at the trajectory for growth, it is highly likely that we will get to the traffic volumes that would warrant this type of improvement. Without the improvements being provided through this project, they would have to go through the competitive NC DOT process, which can take years, decades to complete in order to get, to secure the funding, to make the improvements that are included in this project currently.
Okay, thank you. Couple of questions for the developer. Hi. Could you summarize for us the traffic improvements that have already been completed? You mentioned that there was about 7 million that your client had already spent on traffic improvements.
Yes, in fact, we have our traffic engineer here, Ms. Johnson, if you don't mind if I call on Lyle Overcash.
That would be great. Thank you.
And by the way, I also have here the April 12, 2023 memo by the Transportation Department saying what they say we should do, and we're doing it all. And that was an agreement between them, Department of Transportation, and Mr. Overcash.
All right. Good evening. Lyle Overcash, Kimlin Horn Associates, 421. Lyle Overcash, Kimlin Horn Associates, 421 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. Maybe a little bit difficult to detail what they've done so far without a map, but I'll try to, if you can kind of visualize the area. The biggest improvement that we had to tackle was the, was a northbound left turn lane on 751 at Stagecoach, and that was the, the biggest deficiency in this area when we first started, I think it was '05 we started looking at this project. That was the most expensive undertaking, I think it's about $2.5 million to build a 400-foot left turn lane on northbound 751. That's for all the folks coming up from Chatham County, come from Cary, and they're trying to head over to Chapel Hill, and they're trying to, you know, cut through Stagecoach to around to Farrington. So that was a, a significant undertaking. So that was the, the biggest improvement, and if you continue down Stagecoach to Farrington Road, we did a signal improvement there and a turn lane. We also have one more turn lane that's on our list there as well. Again, that's about two miles from the development. If you go three miles to the east over to Grandale and Barbie, we did a, a turn lane there as well, so that's about three miles from the development. That was a northbound, I think it was a right turn lane. We came over down Massey Chapel to, right there across from the church, there's a new big traffic signal there. We put in that traffic signal, and we also designed the traffic signal at the south connection of Massey, we call it north and south. And that, that next signal is on our list and also on other development lists in the area. If you head down Massey Chapel to 751, there again, there was a right turn lane constructed on the westbound approach of Massey Chapel at 751, constructed that improvement as well. I'm thinking that's all, Grandale and Barbie, yes. Oh, okay, Herndon, yeah. That's, I don't know if that, that was helpful or not, if you could visualize all those or not.
It was a little hard to visualize, but I do appreciate it. Thank you. So, so the improvements that y'all have done so far are based on a negotiation that you've already had with our planning department and with the DOT?
Correct.
Okay.
And I did leave out improvements at where we're connecting to 751, so at, at the site driveway, turn lanes, you know, left turn lanes, right turn lanes, signalization at, at the, at the site driveway as well.
Okay, and it, and it's your, it's your analysis that, based on the changes to the amount of commercial space, that the additional improvements are not needed to support this development?
Yes, as Mr. Cunningham noted, we've greatly, you know, almost cut the development in half as far as traffic goes. And so what's that, that's done is kind of shrunk the study area. Before, we had, I think it was 25 intersections, it was a, you know, probably one of the biggest TIA's that we had performed. And so now, when you, you know, cut the traffic in half, and, and, you know, with the elementary school being removed from the development, that kind of changes the patterns. You know, for elementary schools, you have a lot more traffic in the morning, and so it, it changes the patterns quite a bit, and removing the commercial development has greatly lessened the impacts of the development.
Gotcha, thank you. I think I need Mr. Cunningham again.
Do you want to ask a question?
Hi, I do. So, I understand.
Council, I'm sorry, City Manager Page wanted to, I think something dramatic to what you were asking.
Thank you very much. I was going to speak briefly to the affordable housing. You mentioned some of the most recent projects we brought forward. I would preface my statement by saying, all projects are different, and the supplement in order to make affordable housing affordable is very, very different. I think we had a couple of projects where there were about 130 units or more, and those, you know, have ranged from, in recent awards, 5 million to, you know, I'm looking at one that's 6.9 million, 7 million. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention, because the numbers can, can vary greatly.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Will you resume, Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. So I understand why y'all are reducing the office space, obviously there's not as much demand for office. I would like a little bit more context as to why you're reducing the commercial space, though.
The retail space and, you know, I think part of this is the live-work-play concept can be achieved with some of the things that we're already talking about doing. There's a community grocery store that we want to bring, there is a fueling and charging station that we want to bring, we can deliver the shops, the coffee shops, the dry cleaners, the amenities that the neighbors are talking with us about. In fact, some of the engagement with neighbors over the last couple of weeks have been, can you do an X, Y, and Z? Well, we have so much of that already programmed to bring to the community. And part of this is responding also to the fact that the Great Recession, which this project was approved in the middle of the Great Recession, but it was conceived at a time when retail was really hot, it's just not as marketable today, and we're trying to be responsive to the fact that every time we open up the paper or check online, folks are saying, we need more housing, we need more quality affordable housing. So we're trying to move towards the market. We also, very importantly, recognize that the number one complaint about all the development in Southern Durham is traffic, traffic, traffic. And if we can bring it down substantially, we're moving in the direction of neighbors that used to have a real big problem with this project, but we've been engaging with some of the folk that had a problem with this project, and they like the fact that it's less intense, they like the fact that the traffic's going down.
Thank you, that's helpful. So, just to give you a general sense of where I am on this at this point, increasing the number of residential units and decreasing the office and commercial space feels totally reasonable to me. I think your dedicated housing fund proffer is still too low. It would cost the city, I'm, our city manager is saying, a minimum of $5 million to subsidize 130 units of affordable housing. I'm not entirely sure about the, the road commitments, I feel, I'm kind of in between the, the, you know, the fact that the traffic is going down seems to require less road improvements, but also our transportation director is saying that those road improvements are going to be, are going to be needed, would be harder to get in the future, and it would be easier, honestly, to just get them now from y'all. And I'm still a little, and I'm concerned about us not having an independent appraisal for the land that was supposed to go to DPS. I understand that DPS has agreed to this $1 million donation, and that you're increasing that, which I appreciate. I also feel like they may not have, they may not feel that they have much of a choice in the matter. And so, I, I mean, if, if that's the best we can do, that's the best we can do. I'm sure that, you know, 10 to 20 acres of the residential land in your development would cost far more than 1.5 million. But my, my interest there is just to make sure that we get as much as we can, as much as we can for DPS. So my, so I'm, I'm not feeling the affordable housing proffer, I think that needs to go up. And I think if it did, I would feel okay about most of the other things in your proposal. But if it's, if y'all committed to 130 units, we need at least what it would cost for us to build that on our own. Thanks.
Thank you. And, if I may, it's the county that put the $890,000 value on it, it's not us, and, and.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And, and if, and if, and if you would like the letter from, a different letter, an email from Durham Public Schools in which they said they thought they did have a choice, and they proposed the $1 million, I'd be happy to send this to the council as well.
Is, is the land that they were, what's happened with the land that they were supposed to be donated?
So, they can't build a school, and we keep offering to donate it to them to build a school, because that's what the folk there want, that's what, and they say the earliest they could possibly build a school, December 31, 2045.
So is that land currently vacant? You haven't done anything else with it?
We have not done anything with that land, yes ma'am. And now, part of it is developable, and part of it is open space, part of it is very much some of the green space where you could put playgrounds for kids and things of that nature, but it also goes back into the woods, and it's part of the open space that's being preserved in this community.
Okay, so, so the new plan would be put houses on part of it, leave part of it as open space?
It, it will definitely be, the vast majority of it will be preserved as open space. About 3.75 acres of it are developable. We actually don't have a plan yet. This exchange with DPS and what we wanted to do, April 14th, I mean, and, and they, they met April 20th in session, and the school board came out and said, if you'll donate a million dollars, we'll say yes, and we'll take it, instead of trying to figure out what to do with the land.
Yeah, yeah, and that makes sense, and I think, you know, we're in a very different position from the school board.
Yes, ma'am.
We can just vote no, and you have to do the original plan, right? I mean, I want to work with you, I just want to, I want to maximize the, the amount of resources that we can get for our residents as part of this negotiation.
Yes, ma'am.
And, yeah, I understand that they, you know, they're building new schools in other places, this is not where they, where they want to build a school, but we have leverage that they don't have.
Yes, ma'am.
So, yeah, again, I wouldn't be doing my job.
And I'm honoring that by increasing the proffer.
My leverage.
And they did build an elementary school two miles away while this site was sitting there, and so, but we want to do right, and do right by you too, Madam Councilman.
Yeah, and I mean, I, yes, I want to do right by the residents of Durham who, who were, you know, who were made certain commitments, and, and especially with regard to the affordable housing, we, you know, we need every affordable home that we can get. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, anyone else? Councilmember Williams.
I guess I can ask staff a question while we're waiting for the applicant. So considering part of the, part of the, the developing this, this area, you all mentioned some commercial space like mixed in with the residential, is that right? Is that allowed currently to be able to do that, small retail or commercial mixed with residential?
Yeah, that's a part of the mixed use designation. In addition, they have a commitment about vertical integration and how much square footage would be vertically integrated retail.
Okay, great, thank you. Are there any other modes of transportation, I guess, like the sidewalks building out of all, all those things, but in regards to, in the traffic, in the, in the traffic plan, is there any like bike lanes or anything there?
I believe, Councilmember, that yes, we have committed to bike lanes, and we've committed to walking trails that go through the development, and then originally conceived, we were going to connect with the nature trails that the Corps of Engineers has on the other side of the line.
Right.
We did our best with them, I think.
They're difficult.
Out there, make their own trails, God bless them, and, but we, but yes, we, we preserve the bike lanes. We, in fact, actually, not preserve bike, we put in bike lanes, and we will put in additional bike lanes with the transportation improvements that are, that are identified in this memorandum from the city.
Great, thank you. Every, go ahead.
Well, so he was going to speak to the affordable housing piece, maybe when Councilmember Johnson comes back in.
She can hear you, okay. You can wait, or you can go ahead.
I'm Alex Mitchell, I'm, I'm the developer, so Cal's done a great job of answering questions, but I think I can add a little bit more clarity on some of these things. To answer your question, Councilman, about sidewalks, we have a 10-foot wide sidewalk that goes north to south of the property, ties in to a neighborhood that's contiguous with us into their trail system. We also will have crosswalks that tie over to Chancellor's Ridge, which we give our, give our citizens access to the American Tobacco Trail. You could theoretically walk here from there. We do have, one question came up, we do have two dedicated bus stops. Obviously, we can't control triangle transit, but they want, or go triangle if they want to come or not, but we have already committed to the, to the stops that they'll put us on route. Trying to think of other things that come up. I know Councilwoman Johnson had several questions about affordable housing, and I wanted to kind of, one of the big differences in our program, if you vote no to this amendment, remember, we agreed to 80% for 15 years, and your programs are, are much different now. I think a lot of them are 60% for 30 years, and so when you're comparing values of what it costs us to do this, you know, a 15-year commitment at 80% is obviously less valuable than 60-30 is for affordable housing. We felt that 2 million, then increase to 3 million, that proffer will allow you to, to put the funds in place where it's needed, because quite frankly, we've done 34 of the units already, we have to do 96 more, and if you take 80% of the area MSA or AMI, you know, a family of four, I think the AMI right now is $87,000 in 2021, so go to 80% of that, you're at what, my mouth, 70 grand. Take a 30% of that, so as long as I can have an apartment there, that someone, that can put $21,000 a year to it, then I qualify, I, I've met my threshold, that's not where, that's not affordable housing, that's not where the problem is. I mean, we need, my, my goal was that this $3 million allowed you guys to put it to people who really need the help. And quite honestly, the workforce housing, most of that's going to be there anyway. I'm going to do that based on market. And so a lot of my apartments are going to be workforce housing, they're going to make sure teachers and firemen and, and folks can all afford to live there. Does that help at all, Congressman?
All right, you just.
Councilmember Johnson.
Councilmember Johnson was nodding here, so I'll update you. So he, you said 4 million, that, is that, you said 4 million?
No, 3, 3, yes, I said 3.
I tried.
I got you.
I tried, okay.
And I, and I do believe, we asked, I think 2.8 is the greatest proffer, the, the largest proffer that's ever happened in Durham, and we are not asking for any affordable business or anything in return.
Councilmember, Councilmember Johnson, did you have a follow?
Uh, yeah, thank you. I think, I mean, your point about the 80% for 15 years versus 60% for 30 years is well taken. I think the workforce question, you know, like the, the folk, the, you know, folks that you're talking about with, you know, salaries, say, at the city, minimum livable wage is something like 38,000 a year, you know, even if there's two of those folks, they're not going to be able to afford more than, you know, 1,600, 1,700 in rent. Are you, are you going to have apartments in that range in your development?
No.
Yeah, so you're not, I mean, you're not doing.
What Cal mentioned earlier is, is right. When we set this project up, the big push was environmental protection. And we, one thing that hasn't been mentioned, we agreed to cut our impervious surface from 70% to 55%. That took out 22 acres of impervious, took out 22 acres of parking lots.
Sorry, before you get too far on this topic, what rent do you consider workforce housing?
I would think workforce would be somewhere in the, if you, supposedly, if, if you believe the MSA, the numbers, it's 80% of the AMI. That's what is called, I guess, workforce housing.
Sure, and you said the AMI was 85,000.
Uh-huh.
So 80% of that is 68,000, and then the rent you can afford at 68,000 is 1,700 a month.
Mm-hmm.
So what do you consider a workforce housing rent?
We'll be able to, we'll, we'll be at that rate, probably.
Be at 1,700 for like a two-bedroom?
Yeah.
Okay, um, okay, thank you, can you?
I mean, I'm not building apartments, but I think that's where the market is right now for the apartment guys.
Okay, great, okay, thank you, can, you can go back to the environmental stuff.
So the, so locking us, locking down those, dropping our impervious to 55% really put us in a bit of a box. And, and, you know, the deals that I've seen come through, they're all surface parked, and as Cal said, parking spot, surface park's $2,000, as you guys know, structured decks, $25,000. That makes it very, very difficult to do on the ground affordable housing, especially in the, in the 60% range. And so, the reason I bring this forward is just to give you guys total, you know, open communion of what I, what I'm dealing with, and being totally transparent with you, and why I'm trying to proffer such a large number to try to help fill a void somewhere.
Thank you. What would it cost y'all to implement all of the, and, all of the, the requirements in like the original utility extension agreement? Do you know, I'm sure you know.
To implement all the requirements?
How much would it cost you to, to implement, if we don't change this?
The traffic, traffic requirement?
Everything. If we didn't, if we vote no tonight and we don't change any of this, what's the cost to your project?
Well, I mean, our traffic insurance is close to yours, 19 million's probably a pretty, pretty fair number.
Uh-huh.
The problem is, I haven't done it in 15 years.
Right.
If I can't afford the traffic, you may not get any traffic, you know, and so, this, this project, this, this, what I'm asking to do allows me to move forward, to get the, the neighbors their grocery store quicker and all that kind of thing, by getting, just charging me for the traffic that I'm doing. You know, I'm not asking to, to get, to cut, you know, my traffic out, I'm asking just to be charged for the traffic I'm putting on the streets.
Sure, okay. So, but you've got, you've got the traffic, you've got the public school land, which I guess doesn't really cost you anything, you just can't do anything, it costs you what, the opportunity cost, whatever you could have done with it. And then you've got the affordable housing, do you have a sense of how much it would cost you to produce 130 units of affordable housing at the?
We've done, like I said, we've done 34 of those now, we have 96 left. I don't know that it costs us a whole lot more. know that it costs us a whole lot more. It's a cumbersome reporting process for for our owners, for apartment owners.
Okay.
They don't like it.
Okay.
So I'm trying to work through that. But the traffic is obviously the biggest, biggest piece of it.
Right. Okay, so, so we're saving you $20 million?
Well, probably won't ever do it. I mean, that's just the truth. Who's going to build a grocery store 50,000 feet and go do $15 million of traffic? Doesn't happen. You you price it out. So maybe I can do it in 10 years, or 15 years, or 20 years. But the reality is, there's no developer out there that's doing $15 million in off-site traffic for 100 developable acres. That's what you're asking me to do. That's what I'm agreeing to do now. And so, you know, on the, on the, on the school deal, what I want to, only thing I want to make sure everybody understands is it is 10 acres. 3.9, 3.9 acres are actually developable. So that's why the value is at $1 million. It's not 10 acres that you could carve up into a bunch of homes and townhomes. You can't, you can't build it all. It's just 3.9 acres. So it's at that, at $1 million is a quarter million dollars an acre.
Okay, thank you. So.
Has that been helpful at all? I'm just trying to.
No, it's super helpful. Yes, yes, very helpful. Thank you. What what I'm, what I'm confused about now, though, is you're saying you're not going to, you're not going to do it. You're not going to do the traffic improvements. But aren't you required to do them?
Only as I build the project.
Okay, so you just wouldn't build it?
Well, I mean, I wouldn't build it until it made sense financially. I mean, I can't go to the bank and borrow money to build a grocery store. They're not going to lend me that plus 15 million for traffic.
Uh huh.
You know, they're not going to do it. And when you, when you put on a, on a developer to develop, to to do improvements over most of southern Durham County, I'm not a state. I mean, I'm not, I'm not, it's hard to do that, that level of improvement. And when I signed up for it in 2010 with $7 million.
Yeah. But you did sign up for it.
I did.
That's why we're here. Okay, thank you. That is, yeah, that is all, that is all very helpful. And I'm going to stop talking and pass them up.
Thank you, Councilmember. Council, did you have a follow-up? Go, go, go for it, go for it.
Thank you. I was just gonna follow up and just note, so we're at 19 million with traffic, and you've spent seven, so there's about.
26.
26, okay. I, I did want to just circle back around, and I know we've been talking about dollars, just acknowledging that the open space is valuable as well. And we've heard about pickleball courts, and skating rinks, and splash parks. And if all of those things are amenities available on this site?
Yeah, we have 14 small parks. Some of them are scheduled to have community gardens, some are scheduled to have playgrounds. We have a full amenities center for the homeowners. The good news for them is the new apartments will not be able to use those amenities centers. They don't have to worry about any crowding and what they've signed up for. And it's designed to be, get out, know your neighbors. The Trinity Park comparison, exactly what I want to do. We want to do that with new construction. You want people to get out and see their neighbors, be on their sidewalks, you know, alley loaded, that that kind of thing is sort of the vision.
So what's the likelihood that this 3.9 acres turns into an amphitheater?
I never thought about amphitheater, but, you know, the more I pay the city, the more I have to figure out how to get that money back. I mean, pay the school system. That million and a half, I have to figure out how to make that back. And so my idea was to get them the money out of, out of making, out of dividing that up into lots and whatever I made, you know, pay for it.
Got you.
Thank.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I don't need 20 seconds. My colleagues have exhausted just about everything I would have asked, and the letter from DPS made it real easy for me. Raleigh has simplified this discussion for me. This is, when we talk about Raleigh inserting itself into local politics, this is precisely what we're talking about. So the the floor, for me, has already been set. I think the amended UAE is much better than the choice that Raleigh has given us. Lightyear is better. So I'm going to be supporting the option where it's the amended UAE. I think a spoonful of sugar helps the medicine go down. It was either Mary Poppins or Tupac who said it. But 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 this is the sugar for the medicine that the state has given us. We, you know, this was foisted upon us. This is what we're talking about. And and our legislature is far more activist now than it was back then, when this occurred. So I'm going to be supporting option one. I'm giving great deference to the letter from our colleagues and our friends at DPS. And that's what I think, well, that's, that's how I'm going to be, what I'm going to be supporting. I thank my colleagues for their questioning. Just kind of, did you have any wrap-up comments before I close and bring it back up to the dais?
I don't, but thank you. And I'm happy to address any other questions.
Thank you. At this time, then, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. It's back before the dais, and I'm going to yield to her honor.
Thank you. And I will yield it back to you to carry the vote. But I would ask for, for Councilman Hosey Hyman, who had to leave for an excused absence for the remainder of the meeting, and will entertain a motion at this time. So moved?
Second.
Right, it's been moved by Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Freeman, second to be Councilmember Williams. We can do this by hand vote. All those in favor, just raise your left hand. Seeing none, she is granting an excused absence. I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor Protem, to carry the rest of the, the rest of this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The matter is back before the council. Before we go to vote, was there any final questions? Call the Councilmember Freeman.
Just making sure that we're structuring the motion to include the amended. So I think, there we go, staff's coming back.
Thank you so much. So, yeah, we want to clarify that when you vote on the amended UAE, we're hearing the following proffers: An increase in contribution to Durham Public Schools in the amount of $1.5 million. An increase to the contribution to the dedicated housing fund in the amount of $3 million. We're still having the payment in lieu option and the 10% option. And then we wanted to clarify on the contribution to DPS from the applicant. The letter says it's exclusively for the construction of Durham Public Schools, and we'd like to ensure there's a caveat that it's subject to their approval. I know Councilmember Freeman had asked for a million to go to the construction facilities, and 500,000 go to operational programs.
I.
Is that correct?
Should we perhaps just leave it open-ended as an additional 500,000 to DPS? Or was there, yes, yes, open-ended, an additional 500,000 to DPS? That doesn't have the same caveat.
Perfect.
For school construction.
Thank you.
You, you captured that?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Caballero?
Thank you. To clarify, it's 3 million for affordable housing, and then 1.5 million for DPS?
Correct.
And then the updated TIA, but that does not include the widening. That is valued at $19 million.
That is currently not proposed in the UAE that you'd be voting on as amended, correct?
Um, thank you.
And all of those would be contained in voting for option, motion one, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, colleagues, if there's no other queries or or comments, we'll move now to the motion as this public hearing is closed. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an amended utility extension agreement. That includes revised development plan, committed elements with Southern Durham Development LLC, John A. Mitchell individually, and 751 Investments LLC.
Motion is read.
I have a motion from her honor, and a second from Councilmember Williams. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote?
The motion passes unanimously, six to zero.
All right, motion number two, to adopt an ordinance amending the unified development ordinance by taking property out of mixed use with the development plan, MUD, and residential rural RR, recorded utility extension agreement, one, UAEA one, county jurisdiction, and establishing the same as mixed use with the development plan, MUD, and residential RR amended utility extension agreement, two, UAEA two, city jurisdiction, effective June 3, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Williams, and a second from Councilmember Johnson. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote and report out.
The motion passes five to one, with Mayor O'Neill voting no.
Of course, Your Honor.
I need to change my. Madam Clerk, it should have been a yes. I pressed the wrong button. So if you would change that, thank you.
Okay, correction, six, zero.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
So, thank you.
And the last, well, a motion to adopt a consistency statement is required by NCGS 160D, that's 605.
The move?
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilmember Williams, and a second from her honor. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote?
I pressed the right button.
Please close the vote and report out.
And the motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I yield back to you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We will now turn to item number 30, Consolidated Annexation 901 and 903 Sharon Road. But we might want to take a short break, so we're going to do it about five minutes. What about that?
Okay.
Five. I'm gonna try to. Never call it off. It's last, 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 end show.
Guys, stop giving us headaches with this complicated crap.
Here's some tips to ensure that your garbage and recycling gets picked up. One, your carts should be put out for collection before 6:00 a.m. on your collection day. Two, your carts should be at least three feet from all other objects, such as mailboxes, telephone poles, fire hydrants, trees, and other carts. Three, your carts should be no more than three feet from the curb. Four, no vehicles should be blocking your carts. The mechanical arms on our trucks need direct access to your carts and cannot reach around vehicles. To find more information about garbage and recycling pickups, go to this web address.
Did you know the city of Durham has interpretation and translation services available? The city adopted a language access plan to provide language services and help non-English speakers have access to city services and programs without a language barrier. Through the city's language access plan, residents have the right to request interpretation and translation services free of charge, receive translation of vital documents and emergency communications in Spanish, and submit complaints of language discrimination or on the failure to adequately provide services in accordance with the city's language access plan policy. For more information on the city's language access efforts, visit durhamnc.gov/languageaccess. ¿Sabía que la ciudad de Durham cuenta con servicios de interpretación y traducción? La ciudad adoptó un plan de acceso al idioma para ofrecer servicios inglesicos y ayudar a que las personas que no hablan inglés puedan tener acceso a los servicios y programas de la ciudad sin la barrera del idioma. Por medio del plan de acceso al idioma, los habitantes tienen derecho a solicitar sin costo alguno servicios de interpretación y traducción, recibir la traducción de documentos importantes y de comunicaciones de emergencia en español, presentar una denuncia de discriminación por motivos de idioma o por no recibir servicios de manera adecuada de acuerdo con la política del plan de acceso al idioma de la ciudad. Para recibir más información sobre la labor de la ciudad relacionada con el acceso al idioma, visita durhamnc.gov/acceso. visita durhamnc.gov/acceso.
All right, everybody. We're gonna come back. In session at this time. The next item on our agenda is also a public hearing for a zoning matter. Item number thirty, excuse me, consolidated annexation nine zero one and nine zero three Sharon Road. And we will again hear from Mr. Cahill.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor O'Neil. I'll be shorter and sweet on this one. A request for a utility extension agreement voluntary annexation initial zoning map change was received from Keith Strong of Strong Rock Engineering for two parcels of land totaling around eighteen acres and located at nine oh one and nine oh three Sharon Road. This annexation petition is for contiguous expansion of the primary corporate limits. The applicant intends to develop sixty-three units consisting of at least thirty-five of those units being townhouses. The current zoning is residential rural and residential suburban twenty. The applicant proposes to change his designation to residential suburban ten with a textual development plan. This request, case Z2224, received a recommendation of denial from the Planning Commission on December thirteenth by a vote of eleven to one. At the time of Planning Commission, this was a general zoning map change with no textual development plan associated with it. Since the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant has changed the application to a textual development plan. And this textual development plan commits to the following: limiting the uses and units to sixty-three, limiting the impervious surface to a maximum of thirty-five percent of the site, committing to interior townhouse lots of no more than twenty-four feet in width, and makes contributions to both the Dedicated Housing Fund and Durham Public Schools. There are three motions required for this application. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill. You have heard the report from staff, and I am now going to declare this public hearing open. First, are there any questions for staff from members of the council? Looking to my right. Looking to my left.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
You may, Mayor Proton.
One quick question. In the social pinpoint comments, there seemed to be some confusion about if the appropriate site was being referenced for the the community benefit type thing. Do you know what I'm talking about? Is that?
I was just a bit confused when I read through the, someone in their social, I think it was from one of the environmental folk. There seemed to be some discrepancy as to whether the right property was being considered with our criteria and metric.
Absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out. So people often comment on the wrong project or get confused. When they do, they leave an email address, and staff follows up with them, and we communicate the correct address and property. That would be the case for this one as well.
Got you. Okay. I had never seen that before. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I believe now we will turn to hear from our applicant.
I'm sorry.
Did you have another question?
Where are you seeing the social pinpoint?
Oh, it was in one of the
Attachment J.
Yeah, Attachment J. All right. Did you have any further questions, Councilwoman Freeman? All right, Mr. Goj. We have about five, I think five speakers that are opponents. And we saw you all with what, five minutes? You want to start there?
Yeah, I'll be less than five minutes. Good night or morning almost. Mayor O'Neil, Mayor Proton Middleton, and members of the council, I'm Neil Goj, attorney at the Morningstar Law Group, seven hundred West Main Street in Durham. I am representing the builder for this project, which is Dries Homes. I want to thank Mr. Cahill for his presentation. You might recall that this project came before you, I believe, last month. Our firm was not involved in the project until after it went to Planning Commission. And originally, as Mr. Cahill mentioned, the case was filed as a general use rezoning without a development plan. We asked for a continuance at your April third meeting so that we could convert the case to a textual development plan. We have done that. There are seven conditions. They are, as mentioned, I would just say chiefly sixty-three units total, thirty-five, a minimum of thirty-five of them have to be townhomes. The interior townhome lots cannot be wider than twenty-four feet. We did add a commitment related to the road improvement right at the entrance of the project. We also have limited the impervious area to no more than thirty-five percent, which is quite low. We've committed monetary contributions to DPS in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred and to the Affordable Housing Fund in the amount of forty thousand. Overall, this is a sensible infill project on about eighteen acres of land. The adjacent established neighborhood is all single-family detached homes. This project would provide a mix of both single-family and townhome houses, which helps provide a good transition from the less to more intense housing types. Our team is available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Attorney Goj, are there any questions for Mr. Goj before I call up the public speakers? All right. We would have Ms. Donna Stenbach, Ms. Pamela Andrews, Ms. Pam Williams, Ms. Rebecca Freeman, and Mr. Thomas Freeman. And if you have a particular order, you may do so. I do not believe that we have anybody on the internet. Would that be correct, Madam Clerk?
On the screen. But I'm telling you, I can't make it.
Madam Mayor, there's one person in the queue, but I don't know if they're here for this item.
All right. We'll come back to them if you remind me once we go through this.
Hello, I'm Donna Stenbach, forty-eight twenty-five, Jimmy Rogers, Durham, North Carolina. Today, we're looking at, or this evening, we're looking at nine oh one, nine oh three Sharon Road. And in this map, you'll see that the school is pictured by, as a crow flies, the school is two thousand feet from the property. And that's going to be important in some of the discussions about the metrics. Also, there's surrounded by some farming and a horse ranch there. So it's coming in the middle of some rural activities, although it does have surrounding development areas. Okay. Whoops. Now, look at the matrix. All but one of the environmental metrics are minimal. Minimal's, to me, are not a quality plan. We're not even trying for proffers these days. So I'm gonna ask for some and hope I can get some support because there's some that we've agreed are good for the city. The mass grading is yes, and it's, since it's over four acres, what we'd like to request is that the applicant follow the sedimentation and erosion control amendment, TC twenty-two double oh, double oh five, and the mass grading plan, and tree preservation proposed amendment, TC twenty-two double oh, double oh four. The blasting is probably yes, based upon the surrounding properties. And keep in mind, it is near to the school and near to the horse ranch. And we'd request the schedule be provided for the blasting so that the folks can be prepared. The stormwater plan is minimal. There's, it was stated in, by the planning department that no stormwater development plan was presented for the stormwater development review. And that was stated in the zone map change report. So that's a pretty big missing item there. And I'm requesting the one-hundred-year storm event because we're dealing with triassic soil and failing existing requirements for erosion control. There, let's see. There we go. As I stated, we really would like to see these amendments that are being worked on and going through the process very well. In fact, the zero five amendment is due for state approval on Tuesday of next week. So we think to ask for that in this particular development is a fair request and a fair proffer. Should I go ahead? Okay. Good afternoon. My name's Pam Williams. I'm a lifelong resident of Durham, of this community here on Sharon Road. And I am, I'm not going to go back over the twenty-foot project boundary and explain that to you. Again, my concerns is that, you know, we're having developers or contractors, developers, go right up to the property line and grading everything, all the mature trees, digging fifteen-foot cliffs down behind the people's property, right next to their properties. And these are young and old, and I would hate for my kid to be out there with just one of those yellow fences out there. But we are requesting that developer to follow the two amendments that Donna discussed, the mass grading and tree preservation, and also stormwater erosion. Definitely, we would like for them not to do any grading within ten feet of the property lines to maintain mature trees along the property lines. This is in the mass grading and tree preservation amendment. We are requesting a thirty-foot border with an O-six opacity along the property lines and for the state, and state-maintained roads to provide for a good vista and tree canopy along those. Again, this is the property where they are excavating fifteen feet down right behind the property line with just this shallow fence, and will be putting in retaining wells, not replacing trees at all. This right here, the property line goes from right there to there. This, they put drainage in the buffer, and the townhouses are over to the left. This one right here, again, these are townhouses. This is the tree preservation that was put in between the townhouses and the single-family home. So we are asking you to please have them proffer the mass grading and tree preservation. On this one, this, I'm showing you minimum yard standards for straight yards. These are just storing the character of the community. Again, I got about fifteen UDOs. It talks about protection of established character. When I'm talking about maintaining the character of the road, I'm not talking about providing less dense houses or townhomes. Or I'm just talking about, can we make the vista on the road similar to what it was, where we did have some trees that will grow and provide shade along the sidewalks, that will provide a decent vista as you're driving down the road? Because over on the right side, you've got single-family homes with trees. And over on the left side, you've got single-family homes with nothing but fences. We are not a fenced community. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Freeman?
I'm Rebecca Freeman. Thank you for hearing me this evening. I live at eighteen eighteen Southview Road, and I appreciate your time. At the slide that is up there now is the Lick Creek Basin in southeast Durham. And you can see that in the colored areas, there's a lot of this construction that's going on. There's about ten thousand four hundred forty-nine units yet to come, yet to come. Although, at that, in that area, there is a severe lack of infrastructure that has been noted time and time again. EMS, fire, police, and schools. There's no transit or bus stops. And I want to just tell you about three of the incidents that happened today in Durham with lack of infrastructure. At ten sixteen a.m. this morning in Durham, NCC couldn't get calls through to Durham EMS with, they had a person with chest pains. At Monday at six thirty-nine p.m., a officer was asking for help, but there were no officers available to help her. Monday at eight thirty-two p.m., there was a nine-one-one call, heart problem. No first responder available. Somebody will come? I don't think so. Another thing I wanted to mention is that some of the residents that were engaged by the planning department in the southeast Durham focus area study, these were their comments. Lack of sidewalks, bike, bike areas, road connectivity, there's no bus service, poor pavement, and road conditions are bad, traffic congestion, and there was a different thing on some of the roads, speeding drivers, unsafe road crossings, concern about stormwater running off, running off and harming natural areas, as we've seen time and time again already, concerns about mass grading and tree loss, new developments are encroaching on environmentally sensitive areas, not, no walkable grocery stores or retail, and there's no walkable area. These are residents, not us here. These are residents that were engaged by the city in what they said. Next slide. Oh, no. Okay. The only thing I want to say about this slide is the first one. And we've heard different talk, suggestions about how many people are coming to Durham every day and how we need, you know, we've got to make housing for them. We've got to make housing for them. And this came from Data Works in a presentation that was made to you folks last fall in 2022. And you've noticed that within people coming to Durham every day was fifty-seven point two people. Leaving Durham every day was fifty-eight. So we had a net negative effect on that particular slide where the Data Works reported this out. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Good evening. I know we're all tired, but we feel passionate about being here tonight to speak to you all, and I appreciate you letting us do that. So I want to share, this development is a very short distance from this blasting. I had a call from a lady that lives right across the road, and she said, I need you to come. This is a couple, about a month ago, so I went over there. And the development, this very small acreage, was not supposed to have blasting. And at the last minute, blasting was required, and this is what you see. It's a video, and we snapped these shots from the video from the homeowner across the street. Her mother is elderly, homebound, and this is what she deals with in her last days of her life. It's really sad. I'm also very concerned about the children at these school. As Pam mentioned and Donna mentioned, we measured it today. It's two thousand feet to the school. And it's a very large school off Sharon Road that these children are going to hear this blast. And with every development says, we aren't sure, we don't know, but inevitably, there is blasting. So I'm asking you, requesting the blasting contractors to let people know. There's, there's just got to be some protocol set up for this blasting. It's just got to be. We met with the fire captains last Thursday, three of them. Three of them in a home to show the damage that was done. Here is the home. This is the Eluxens home. I've spoken about it many times. It's right on the conservation subdivision that we tout to be so great. This is what's happening to people's home in real time. I also wanted to show you this one. These are homes that I visited this week. On the left-hand side is a lady's home. She's in her late seventies. She's a retired nurse. She had to go back to work just to be able to help pay for damages that are done. It's very sad. She has a blasting development to her left. She now has one coming from behind her. The picture on the right is from a young lady. She spoke before to you guys, Paige Polk. This is just one of many pictures she sent me today. These are real situations of real homeowners that are suffering. I don't know how else to say it. I come to you humbly, and I plead to please help us. This is what the fire permit says. A pre-blast inspection of all structures and facilities located within seven hundred and fifty feet of proposed blast locations. As part of the inspection, the structures and facilities would be videotaped and/or digitally photographed to document any pre-existing damage so that any claims for post-blast damages could be compared to pre-blast inspection report. A complete pre-blast report shall be submitted with documentation for a permit. Yet, when these people try to get their pictures and ask for their pictures in public request, I need my pictures so I can prove what was there before and what is thereafter, they can't supply them. We met with the fire people last week. There is a problem getting these people, the repairs, to their homes that they rightfully deserve. I'm asking you to please help us get something fixed with this before another development goes forward. Thank you.
Mr. Freeman?
Thank you. Thomas Freeman. Lifelong Durham County resident. Drip, drip, drip. The previous slide that was shown depicted over ten thousand dwellings, either in the planning queue or under construction. You read the sign, read my slide, please. We'd like to request that a human and natural, environmental accumulation, cumulative impact analysis be done before it is too late. I have stood at this podium many times and have heard the response, oh, there's, the state won't allow us to do that. I have never, I have never been provided with the general statute. All I get are those comments that we just can't do it. This is Fendel Farms, and the, and the erosion that you're seeing there, where is it going? You know where it's going, folks? It's going to Lick Creek. But you, you know about Fendel Farms. You approved it. I'll close with just a several words. They're actually a question. Clean Water Act violation? Question mark? Thank you very much. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Goj. You have about fifteen minutes, I believe, was about ten minutes for rebuttal. Somewhere in there. About ten minutes.
Thank you. I will just comment or add a commitment that the project would handle the one-hundred-year storm. I know that was a request that was made. We had talked about this. This is a commitment we would make, and I don't want to take too much of your time tonight. We hope to have your support. Look forward to answering your questions. Thank you.
All right. I think that we have heard from all speakers, both in person and on the internet, but just let us check to be correct. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers on the internet? All right. I would now declare that this public hearing is closed, and the matter is back before the council. And I will look to my colleagues to see if they have any further questions or comments. Looking to my right, Attorney, Councilwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to check with the applicant on the other items that were requested around the boundary, the opacity, and the established character near the road.
So on the boundary buffers, I mean, we're going to do what's required under the code. My personal opinion on boundary buffers, you know, planning is moving towards building communities. Buffers do nothing but separate people. We're not really interested in having wide boundaries, wide boundary buffers. We will do what is required under the UDO. The character requests, I don't know if I could, I heard it. I don't know what the, what the request was exactly, but what the, what the request was exactly, but, you know, I think it was for a streetscape. My understanding is a streetscape will be required here, so we would do that. And was there another counsel?
Opacity.
Opacity? Again, yeah, we would do what was required under the UDO.
And all of the minimums that are required.
I'm sorry?
The minimums that are required and nothing more is what you're saying?
Oh, we, well, we've already committed to 35% maximum for impervious. We've committed to the, you know, road improvement for the, at the entrance, and we're doing more than the minimum in some places, and then we're meeting the UDO requirement in others.
Thank you. Any other questions of counsel? Mayor Protean?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you all for hanging in with us tonight. Yeah, I was, I was really kind of up in the air about this case. The textual, the absence of the development plan, I know the text development was added after the planning commission, so the planning commission's comments are not reflective of the text development plan. So my first question is, you described it as infill development, correct? You, you see this as?
I did, I did say that, yeah.
We are, I, I understand why you're saying that, even though we're annexing. What is, what is, so is, is the, the character or the, the architecture, the materials, the design elements going to strictly reflect what's already around there? Is, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you talked about the already existing communities. Is that to say that it's going to look like what's already out there?
No, no, that's not it. The, the, so there's a existing community to the east and north, I guess. And that's all a single-family home. So the way that this is set up to work, this will be a mix of single-family detached homes and townhomes. The single-family detached homes are planned to be closest to where there are existing single-family detached homes in the established neighborhood. And then as you move out closer to Sharon Road, that's where the townhomes would go for this development.
And I have a question for our friends from Preserve Rural Durham, whoever the designated to answer is, is it, is it your position tonight that you would support it if they did these buffer things, or regardless of that, you're not supporting it because of blasting? You would support it if they preserve character, but you're not going to support it because of runoff? What, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, is the position that there are some things that would get you to support this project, or is it just DOA because of blasting? And so I'll say, and my second question is, you know, the characterization is that we just say that the state won't allow us to do it and don't mention the statute. But on a number of occasions, and I'm not questioning the representations, representations have been made about other people's property, other people's water, who were never here. And I think one time I, I got blasted because I asked about those folk, you know, being here, and I think I was told that it wouldn't be appropriate to divulge their, their results without their permission, although there were representations made about their test results, but couldn't tell us what they were. So I, I guess my first question is, what would, because it sounds like some of you were saying, if this happened, we're good, and then it sounded like others of you were saying, because of blasting, because of environmental issues, don't approve it. So I'm just trying to, what is, what is the position on this particular project tonight?
To be very honest with you, we know when we come in here, we're going to lose. I'm just, I'm just being honest.
I don't know that, but.
I'm, that's how we feel, but we still feel like, as citizens that care, we need to come in and present the case, we need to ask for certain proffers, things that would do a better job of protecting our community, and that's why we come. We honestly walk in here many nights knowing it's a slim chance that we're going to walk out of here getting the things that, you know, we are asking for. But we watch it week after week because this is our community. We're all born and raised out there. Every person that comes in here every week, we are born and raised in that community, and we care. I'll be 60 years old pretty soon. That's, that's where I lived, that's where my family lived. And so we're just trying to do what would be helpful for our community, not to see the blasting. When I get calls every week from people in my community, and I was out there today with two different families that are suffering from this, that's why I come. I'm trying to provide help for our community. And, you know, the character that's in the UDO, Pam quotes it a lot, she worked as a civil engineer, you know, we're just asking to try to find something that would match the character, because our side of town is not, it's not recognizable anymore. And that's the best answer I can give you.
Got you. I want to, I want to fairly, so I, again, so is it, is it that? And I, listen, I, I don't know half the time how I'm going to vote. I try and do it by the merit. And there, there are people all over this city, in every neighborhood, that are lamenting what's happened to their neighborhoods. In the inner city, it may not be blasting, it's, it's prices, it's the taxes, it's gunfire, it's not being able to afford the stores that are in the neighborhood. Every area has something that they're lamenting about growth. Yours is a little different, but you're not alone in lamenting the growth in our city. I guess my question, put another way, is so with respect to you thinking you're going to lose, am I hearing you say tonight that if these things were added, then would that be smart development? Because I've heard the term smart development used before. So let's operationalize smart development. Some of you said that tree buffers, we're asking for the 100-year storm, we're asking for this and that. Is it fair to assume that if those thresholds were crossed, then you would support it? Or it wouldn't matter because they're still blasting?
No, I mean, those are things that realistically we're asking for, that we think could make better developments, that would not damage the creek as much, that would offer, you know, when I see the Eluxens home, it's their home that we showed tonight in several slides, where the, the whole, every bit of trees, and I personally learned, because I'm not the engineer that Pam is, what a 20-foot buffer meant, when I stood on that bank this week, and I've stood on that bank many times, but this week was different because they have now dug down 14 feet. So when that elderly couple, and they're in their late 70s, walks out to the back of their yard, if they're not careful right now, they fall over 15 feet straight down. They have great-grandkids and grandkids that come over there. That, that's a concern. It's a real concern. So these are things that we feel like we can at least come forward and say, hey, this would make a better development if we could do this. And to work with people to get something that would make the citizens out there feel a little bit better about what's going on, because it's, it's tough out there right now. And, and just to say, and I'm going to shut up after this, and I'm going to go home, so you don't want to hear me anymore tonight. But the project at the very beginning of night, Harlow Place, where that one person gave up that, what, about half an acre? Because we have residents out there all the time that say, I can't take it anymore. I've suffered through this dynamite blasting, I've suffered through, every day, I was out there and it's obnoxious, the bulldozer noise, day after day after day, right on these poor people's property line. There is one homeowner out there that's in his 90s, he can't even go outside anymore because it sets off his hearing aids. That's sad to me. That's really sad to me. And so we are out there every week trying to take a stand for what would make things better for the people in our community.
Indeed, thank you. Finally, could you possibly, if they would allow, forward us, me, anyone who's actually pursued trying to get redress for damage, that's actually causally linked to blasting? Could you send us those people and?
I sure can, because Jody Morton, who's a captain with our fire department, and Chris Wilcox, and Assistant Chief Anuzio were out there last week, and they are currently working with those homeowners to try to get the blasting people to respond to them, because right now, they're not getting responses, just to get their pictures, just to get their videos, so they can make a claim through their insurance company.
Okay. So they're not in possession of their own pictures? Authorities took the pictures?
When they come in there and they do a pre-inspection, the pre-inspection is done by, I think it's supposed to be a third-party independent company. They scan the walls. One lady that I showed you, she got a CD-ROM with her pictures on it. It took a software engineer to get that CD-ROM opened up. I'm not kidding. We finally got hers opened up so she could see her pictures. The other resident, she's the only one that got a CD-ROM that I know of. Everybody else's was scanned digitally, and now they're trying to get their scans back so they can prove what it looked like pre and what it looked like post. And they're trying to work through these pre-inspections that were done to just get their pictures so they can prove to insurance companies, this is my pre and this is my post blasting, so I can get my walls and my ceilings that are coming down fixed.
So the pictures you showed us tonight, what, what's being represented are those, those cracks were not there prior to blasting, and we are suggesting that there's a causal linkage between recent blasting and, because it looked, I'm a layperson, it looked like foundational issues to me. So, so what we're saying is, those cracks were not there, and now they're there, and it, they're because of blasting. Is that the representation?
I do not live in those homes, but that is what is told to me. Those are not my homes, but those are my residents, and I have to take them at their word, that they said this was not there, or that the cracks are getting worse, and that's why they need their pictures to be able to show, this is what it was before it started in the pre-inspection, and this is what it is now in the post.
Thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Caballero?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to be quick. I will be supporting this item. So this is just to, and this is actually a question for Preserve Rural Durham folks, I don't know who, who wants to answer this, because I will share that I, there have been projects that everything has been offered, flaculents way, way beyond what the UDO requires. There have been projects where there has been an ask for it to be a conservation subdivision, but what was actually getting proffered was way beyond what you get in a conservation subdivision. And the, the ask from y'all is always no, don't vote on this. I don't think that there's been a project, even when the proffers on the project are way beyond the UDO requirements, where you all have said, this is a good project. In fact, the one, the only one that I think that I remember is, Ms. Andrews, when you came a few weeks ago for your friend who, who wanted the gas station, you did show up to speak in favor of that one. So that, to me, I think that is the part that is frustrating. We have plenty of other neighborhood groups. There's the Hamlin Neighbors, there's plenty of other groups, Brag Town, they are real clear with what their asks are, they're unified in it, and it's not just, I'm going to come up with a new idea as to why this is a no and you should vote no. And so what they are able to get, maybe they don't love what they're getting, but they are able to get better projects. Y'all have gotten better projects than what would have been allowed by the UDO. This project is giving you better impervious service, and it's giving you 100-year storm flood. That is above the UDO requirement. Is it giving you everything? I don't even think the things around tree save and masquerading even apply, because that's, the, the proposed ordinances are for 50 acres or more. This is a 17-acre project. Maybe I'm wrong on that, but I'm pretty, pretty sure that that is the, the actual proposed ordinance that we're discussing is for 50 acres or more, and this project is for 17 acres. This is not a very large parcel of land. When we have developers in this category, they don't have the large amounts to proffer units or large amounts of money to the Affordable Housing Fund. They don't have it, these are not big projects. So I will be supporting it, and I think that, and I've said it very often, when our development community comes forward and they offer us more than what they are required to do, and they are doing it in good faith, and the project makes sense, then I vote yes. Because at this point, we still need housing, and it moves the needle on the next project. It rings a bell, so that the next project, even a 17-acre project, which is a small project, will maybe be offering a more robust stormwater proffer on that project. So then it moves the needle. It's why, it's why there's been actual units that have been proffered instead of just money, because that has been progress. Places like Fendel Farms and Carolina Arbers, those developments would not be approved today. Those would not, the, the requirements that they would, or the proffers that they would have to give way beyond UDO, they would not be built. The communities that are getting built now are offering much, much more, and we are going to be doing a UDO rewrite, and there can probably be more done, but until that is done, this is the space we're in. And we did actually see, literally the case right before this case, that you all were present and watched, that case was the General Assembly absolutely putting us in our place. There's another community in North Carolina that's, they're, they're fighting it too, and the General Assembly will come and preempt. So to say that that is not a risk for us is very untrue, and you all were in this room and you just experienced it. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Councilwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I want to thank you again for being here and consistently sharing the environmental sensitivities of the sites that we continue to see in these public hearings. I think that there is a disconnect in the way in which we come at these cases, because I think if you are to just look at each case individually, you could see progress and think that that's actually getting you to some point. But when you're collectively counting all of the cases that have come before us with the lack of, you know, respect for the actual existing residents, the actual acknowledgement that masquerading is destroying our streams and creeks. The consistent, overzealous development push that we have to build has created this monster that has been unwieldy and unwilling to dial back. And so similar to how our Fed has been able to put a higher interest rate in place, there's no lever with the existing council, as you stated earlier. And so unless there's a lever put in place that actually raises the interest rate so that we don't see this type of development moving as fast and as quickly as it does in one particular area, especially around Lit Creek, or especially around other creeks that have been identified, I think that we're going to continue to see these Clean Water Act violations. And I, and I appreciate you coming in here, like every meeting, and sharing that, just the insights to say that the stormwater erosion is occurring at a rapid rate, and the more that you consistently keep approving these developments, it's going to continue. That's, that's, that's the short of it. I know that it's not a battle, as much as folks have framed it in that way, and it's not a win-lose. You win every time you stand up here and you fight for your community. You win every time that you speak to what we should be thinking about as a, as a city. And even though you're not a city resident, your voice has been impactful, each and every one of you, your voice has been impactful. I want to say that. It's important that we, not only not hear what we don't, like, we have to hear from everyone in order to get to the best outcomes. And that does mean that there are developers that'll bring things that we've never thought of. I think there was a developer that brought the flaculent. Like, this is, this is a process, and that process has been stifled, because we're consistently just moving forward without an acknowledgement. And I, I mean, I appreciate that my colleagues are, you know, decisive and trying to figure out how to come up with affordable housing, but affordable housing should not be at this expense of our environment, and that is what has been created. And so whether you acknowledge it or not, or accept it or not, we've got to find a different way to go about this that's similar to raising the interest rate. There has to be a lever. And it's not, it's, I mean, it's the same thing with the gun violence. I can't sit here and just say, well, the general legislature or this, or the federal government's not going to do anything about it, so we just got to go with it, just go buy some, you know, assault weapons. That's not going to work. We have to figure it out. And I appreciate your matrix, I appreciate the pictures that actually demonstrate what is happening on the ground, because if and when we hear about the child that fell off that 15-foot cliff that was created by masquerading, we cannot say we didn't hear about it, we didn't know. And I, I mean, I just, I just consist, I'm just grateful that you all continue to be here. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, point of clarification, the, the city of Durham is not in violation of the Clean Water Act. No regulatory or law enforcement agency has made any charge whatsoever that the city of Durham is in violation of the Clean Water Act. And I want the residents and citizens to know that we are under no accusation or allegation of being in violation of the Clean Water Act. Thank you.
So allow me to acknowledge you, okay? All right. So we are now ready to consider the three motions that we have for us. I'm sorry. Councilman Williams, you may proceed.
On this case, it's what I'd like to, just the lack of being able to decisively or provide clarity around the blasting situation with foundation staff, we could just look into that, please, just to make sure that, that residents are getting what they need. And I'd like to know exactly what's happening with that situation regarding the blasting. I won't comment on the other things, other than I do hear you and I do acknowledge you. I think this is just a matter of viewpoint, where we just see a difference. I think this is just a matter of viewpoint, where we just see it differently. And I cannot find logic where we want affordable housing and we want to stop building and all of the things we're saying. It just doesn't make sense to me. So, I'm always willing to talk about that more in detail, rather than up here on the dais, face-to-face, in person, or however we want to do it. Respectfully, I would love to have that conversation, but thank you.
Are there any other comments by councilors? All right, we have three motions before us for our consideration. Motion number one is to adopt an ordinance annexing 901 and 903 Sharon Road into the City of Durham effective June 30th, 2023, and to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility agreement with the Drees Homes Company.
Is it moved? Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Protem and seconded by Councilman Williams. Madam Clerk, if you would open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
The motion passes four to two, with Mayor O'Neill and Councilmember Freeman voting no.
Our second motion for our consideration is to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of the Residential Rural RR and Residential Suburban Dash 20 RS Dash 20 Falls Slash Jordan District B F Slash J Dash B County Jurisdiction establishing the same as Residential Suburban Dash 10 with a textual development plan RS Dash 10D Falls Slash Jordan District B F Dash J Dash B City Jurisdiction.
Will just read?
Been moved by Mayor Protem and seconded by Councilman Williams. Madam Clerk, if you would open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
And the motion passes four to two, with Mayor O'Neill and Councilmember Freeman voting no.
The third motion for our consideration is to adopt a consistency statement as required by NCGS 160D Dash 605.
Move to adopt consistency. Second.
It's Mayor Protem, moved by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilman Williams. Madam Clerk, if you would open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
And the motion passes five to one, with Councilmember Freeman voting no.
Our last item tonight is a non-zoning hearing, item number 31, which is FY 2024 Storm Water Rates. We had a presentation was made at the May 4th, 2023 City Council Work Session, and tonight, we will conduct a public hearing to receive public comment on the proposed FY 2024 Storm Water Rates, and we are now ready to receive a very late staff report. I will turn it over to Mr. Webke. Glad to see you this morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor O'Neill, Mr. Mayor Protem, Middleton, and council. I'm Paul Webke with the Public Works Department. This item proposes to raise stormwater rates for the fiscal year 2024 effective July 1, 2023. The public hearing was noticed in accordance with state and local requirements. The proposed monthly increase for residential customers would be 75 cents per Tier 1. Residential customers at a proposed rate of $49, $4.95 per month, $1.55 for Tier 2 residential customers at a proposed rate of $10.25 per month, and $3.11 for Tier 3 residential customers at a proposed rate of $20.53 per month. The proposed monthly increase for other residential and non-residential customers is $1.55 per 2,400 square feet of impervious surface at a rate of $10.25 per month. There are two motions that the administration recommends that the council approve. One, to conduct a public hearing to receive public comment on the proposed FY 2024 Storm Water Rates, and two, to adopt an ordinance to change the fee schedule, revising stormwater rates effective on July 1, 2023.
Thank you, sir. You have heard the report from staff. I will now declare this public hearing to be open, and will first entertain questions and comments from the council, looking to my left and to my right. Seeing that there are no comments or questions from council, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? We have no one signed up to speak in person. We have no cards, and I will just verify with the clerk that there is no one on the internet as well. All right, let the record reflect that no one has requested to speak on this item. I now declare the public hearing to be closed, and the matter is back before the council. Any further discussions before I entertain the motion in this matter? It seemed to be, all right, for our consideration, we have one motion, and that is to adopt an ordinance to change the fee schedule, revising stormwater rates effective on July 1, 2023. It's been moved by Councilwoman Caballero, seconded by Mayor Protem. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
The motion is unanimous.
All right, everybody, I think that we have gotten to the end of our agenda. Are there any other, the city manager stands up, are there any other matters to claim our attention this morning? All righty, we've had a great time in democracy land tonight. I hereby join this meeting at 12:34 a.m. on May 16th. We're city strong.
All right, have a good night.
All right, y'all, we got to get to work. All clickers, all clickers, so these ladies don't have to come up here and get these.
Aviara, you drive me home.
And the cars, will you? I got them. All right, cars.
All right, all right, everybody, have a great morning.
Have a good night. You have this right morning.
Yeah, I'm done. She's going to lobby us.
Everybody. Night, everybody.
Night.
9:13, cards.
If you have any cards.
Get them saved. All right, councilor.
Take care, Mayor Protem.